We're getting very close. Just so everybody is aware, this is a big meeting for us. And we have been doing a hybrid version of online and in person now for two meetings. It's gonna be a little slower than usual, but there's a lot of folks in the room and I have a lot of cards ahead of me. So I guess the first thing that we will start with is a roll call.
Bedden.
Here.
Brooks.
Present.
Art.
Here.
Haynes. Hodge.
Here.
Latour.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Vickers. Vogel.
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Great, we have nine of 11 commissioners. We have one commissioner who's absent and one vacancy on the commission. So there are nine commissioners present. We will now have a reading of, I guess we need to have a motion for the passing of the minutes from the previous meeting, is that correct?
Yes, I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Bedden.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Art.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Hodge.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
You have a pass.
Thank you. May we get a reading of the consent agenda then, please? We're gonna take this one item at a time.
Mr. Chair, are we, are we efforting, Mr. Chair, are we looking for more chairs? Would be my question, there are a lot of people standing.
I do not know the situation about the chair situation in the room.
These meetings get long, so I don't want anybody to stand for three hours.
They do, they do. So I don't know if there's extra chairs, but I'm sure staff will look into that.
Mr. Chair, the only extra chairs I know of is that there is a room with overflow seating across the hallway.
Okay, well, if good people want to go grab a chair across the hallway, I think they're available. So what we've been doing is after we read each item on the agenda, we've been pausing to allow anyone in the virtual room or who has called in to raise their hand on that item since they are not present to fill out one of these cards. And so it takes a little bit longer to read the agenda, but we will get through it.
Mr. Chair, before I begin, would you like Mr. Collins to instruct people how to raise their hands on WebEx?
I think that's always a good reminder, and through the telephone.
If they are on the WebEx, there should be an icon at the bottom of their screen, just a little hand icon that you click and raise hand, and you click it again and it will lower your hand. If you're calling in online from the phone, I believe that's star three, is that correct? Yep, star three will raise the hand and then press star three again while you're on the phone, it will lower your hand.
Thank you, sir.
Following is the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission, May 12, 2022. You have three items on consent deferral. First is item D, file number G23484, West 19th Street, right-of-way abandonment, immediately east of Leander Street. The applicant requested this application be deferred to the June 9, 2022 agenda. Staff supports that request. This will be the applicant's first request for deferral. The previous deferral was at the request of staff. Item number three, Z9681, rezoning from I-2 to I-3, east side of Thayer Street, 2,000 block. The applicant failed to send the required notifications to surrounding property owners. Therefore, staff recommends this application be deferred to the June 9, 2022 agenda. And item number seven, Z8170E, Chateau Event Center, PCD, 25616, Highway 10. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the June 9, 2022 Planning Commission agenda, as the applicant has informed staff that some changes will be made to the proposed site plan, and staff will need additional time to review those changes. Next are the items on consent approval. Item A, Z8259A, Baseline Road Shopping Center, PCD, southwest corner of Baseline Road and Rec Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PCD zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you. Are there anyone, is there anyone online who would like to raise their hand for item A? If so, please do so now, or if you're on the phone, star three. If anyone has in opposition to item A on the virtual website or on the phone, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, we will continue.
Item C, Z2333D, Ellis Short-Term Rental PDC, 900 West 15th Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in the staff analysis and the agenda staff report.
If anyone is online and would like to oppose item C, please raise your hand now or hit star three on the phone. If anybody is online and would like to raise their hand for item C, please do so now. Seeing none, we'll do the next reading.
Item E, Z9670, Martinez Manufactured Home, CUP 17607 Elvin Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP to allow the continued use of a double-wide manufactured home, subject to the following conditions: compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D and E, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report, and compliance with the manufactured home minimum sighting standards, as noted in section 36, 254D5 of the code.
If anyone is online and would like to raise their hand in opposition to item E, please do so now. If you're on the phone, please dial star three. If anyone is online, please raise your hand now for item three, or item E, I apologize, item E. Seeing none, we'll have the next reading.
Item number one, S45A13A, Otter Creek Industrial Service Center Edition, Lot 2, Track 2, Lot Split, 11701 Interstate 30. Staff recommends approval of the requested replat lot split and associated variances, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
If anybody online would like to raise their hand in opposition to item one, please do so now, or if you're on the phone, star three. If anybody online or on the phone would like to raise their hand in opposition to item one, please do so now. Seeing none, we'll move to the next reading.
Item number two, Z9682, Gateway Services Pet Crematorium, CUP, number three, Otter Creek Circle. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs E and F, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
If anyone online would like to raise their hand in opposition to item two, please do so now. If you're on the phone, star three. If there's any opposition to item two online, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, we'll have the next reading.
Item number 10, Z9683, Jennifer Atkins Edition PRD, north side of R Street, 6,400 block. Staff recommends approval of the requested PRD zoning to allow for the development of eight single-family residences, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
If anybody online would like to raise their hand in opposition to item 10, please do so now. If you're on the phone, that is star three. If anybody is online and like to raise their hand in opposition to item 10, please do so now. Has anyone raised their hand? May we have the next reading?
Item number 11, Z9684, Arkansas Baptist College Community Health Clinic, PDO, 1724 Bishop Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDO zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs E and F, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
If anybody online would like to raise their hand in opposition to item 11, please do so now. If you're on the phone, that is star three. If anybody online would like to raise their hand in opposition to item 11, please do so now. Seeing none, we'll have the next reading.
Item number 12, LU20221401, Land Use Plan Amendment, the Guyer Springs East Planning District, from light industrial, commercial, suburban office, and residential medium-density, two residential medium-density and mixed-use, south of Interstate 30 to Baseline Road, Doyle Springs Road to Little Fish Creek. This package of amendments is designed to make the future land use plan more reflective of current and likely midterm future uses for this area. Staff recommends approval of the amendment package as presented.
If anyone online would like to raise their hand in opposition, please do so now. If you're on the phone, that is star three. If anybody online would like to raise their hand in opposition of item 12, please do so now. Seeing none, thank you for the reading of the consent agenda. May we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, including all staff comments and conditions.
Second.
May we have a roll call vote?
Bedden.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Art.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Hodge.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Is Vickers online now?
Yes, Chairman Vogel, apologize about that, I was experiencing technical difficulties. I'm here, present.
Thank you. So we will go back and have Mr. Vickers' vote, please?
And just a reminder for everybody online, per the ordinance that was passed by the board, when you cast your vote, we need to see, the video needs to be turned on, we need to see a face with the vote.
Thank you for that reminder. Would we like to start over on the roll call vote for the consent agenda?
Do it from the top.
Start it from the top.
Bedden.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Art.
Yes.
Haynes.
Yes.
Hodge.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Vickers.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Passes.
Yes.
Thank you. If anyone in this room had an item that was on the consent agenda and would like to stay, you're welcome to, but you do not have to stay. And obviously seating is at a premium, so I presume we'll have a little exodus now of folks who had their item approved on the consent agenda. While people are leaving, I want to address a concern that another commissioner brought up about recusals. When we have a reading of the next regular agenda items, my ask would be that if a commissioner chooses to recuse themselves, they do so before we read the item, so that the applicant will know how many commissioners will be voting on the application. I think that was a very wise point, that, you know, we have a requirement that a vote gets six votes or more to be passed along to the Board of Directors for approval. And if an applicant does not have eight members of the commission present, then they have the opportunity to defer, is that the understanding?
That's correct.
Okay, so I ask all the commissioners, as the items are read, if they have to recuse, please do so before the reading. So that said, we'll have a regular agenda, as we have listed here. Item B does have four cards in opposition, so if there are any commissioners who need to recuse themselves, please do so at this time. Hearing none, we will have a reading.
Item B, file number Z7965A, Hayes Properties and Enterprises, PCD, located at 1417 South Park Street. On January 5, 2006, the Planning Commission approved an application to rezone four properties located at 1411, 1417, 1421, and 1501 South Park Street, from R3 and R4 to POD, to allow the structures to be used as an art gallery, research center, think-tank office, and a bed and breakfast. Single-family and two-family were also permitted uses. In February 2006, the Board of Directors passed ordinance 19472 approving the POD zoning. The property at 1417 South Park Street was approved in that zoning to be used for either a single-family residence or a research center. The applicant is now requesting to rezone the property at 1417 South Park Street from POD to PCD to allow use of the existing structure as a short-term rental and for small public events. The applicant did provide responses and additional information to all issues raised during staff's review of this item. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues, and the applicant is requesting no variances with the PCD zoning. The applicant, on March 30, did submit additional information to staff regarding the proposal, and the additional information was given to the commission in the agenda package as attachment A. And this additional information really just provided additional details, more details on the proposed uses. Staff does recommend approval of the requested PCD to allow short-term rental and small public events, subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Thank you for that reading. Is the applicant here? Is the applicant, Hayes Property, here?
I'm co-undating the authorized agent for the applicant. She's online, she's remote, she should be able to listen in on these proceedings.
Great, so, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We have somebody to sign for her here. If she wants to turn on her camera, then he can sign for her if she wants to say anything.
Great. Usually, the applicant has
Go ahead. Yes.
Technology, folks, frictionless. Excellent. Usually, the applicant has the opportunity to speak first or defer to the opposition, so we will ask, does the applicant want to listen to the opposition first, or do they want to speak and defer their time to the opposition? Each side will get 20 minutes to speak, and then the commission will be able to ask questions. Applicant, would you like to defer, or would you like to present?
I would prefer to allow the opposition to speak first, and then I can listen to what's being said.
Okay, we will start with the first card that I have on my stack here. Angela Maff- card that I have on my stack here, Angela Matthews, in opposition to item B. Angela, keep in mind, there are four other cards, and we have 20 minutes. So, thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. I live two blocks from this property. I live in the Central High neighborhood. We love our quiet residential neighborhood, and that is exactly what it is. We have the Central High School. We have everything there is done at the end of the day. What you are proposing here is really spot zoning. This is a residential street. Ms. Joyce has lived next door since 1972 in her residential house. And what they are proposing is to allow up to 60 people to attend events in the house right next door to her. I'm talking less than 15 feet from her house. Not to mention, there are only four parking spots. Most of the parking on Park Street is not available for this. And they're proposing 60 people. There's not parking for this. Ms. Joyce is disabled. Where is she going to park? Not to mention, they are also allowing the use of alcohol. It's clear these are going to be parties. They may have proposed that it ends at 9:00 PM, but that's still enough to disrupt this. We've also asked what we can do if the activities continue past 9:00 PM. We were told we can call the police. That is our only recourse. They don't lose their permit. We can't do anything to have it rezoned. Once this is done, this is done. And this is not fair to this residential street. So, I ask each of you commissioners, would you want to be in Ms. Joyce's position? Would you want to live next door to this party house? Would you like to have 60 people partying in this house potentially every single day, right beside you? So, I just ask you to ask yourself all that question. And deny.
Thank you. Next card I have is Denise Leeson.
Good afternoon. My name is Denise Leeson. I'm currently serving as the president of the Central High Neighborhood Association. In the fall, the applicants met with us in one of our Zoom meetings. We asked many, many questions. We were promised responses to those questions, and to date, we still have not received responses. Our neighborhood is, our neighborhood association, our neighbors. We're in favor of businesses in our neighborhood. There are a lot of services that we don't have available. But we also want businesses that come into our neighborhood to be good neighbors. That we want them to be a good fit, like anyone would, like you would, in your neighborhood. In this case, with this applicant, there are conflicts with neighbors. There are conflicts with the National Park Service, of which this house is a part of the National Park historical area. And there's a huge conflict as well with Central High. There are events in the evenings, football games, all manner of events, day and night. There are out-of-state owners of this property. The management company, what we were told is the management company that they have hired or discussed management with is located in Conway. Only five days ago, I spoke with a Realtor who is very familiar with this management company, and he told me that in his experience, this company does not answer the phone. They do not return calls. So, when a neighbor has a problem with renters, how are they supposed to get any relief if the management company will not respond, other than calling the police? There are only four to five dedicated parking spots. Angela Matthews has already discussed the challenges with that. I believe that Ms. Rousseau, the principal of Central High, addressed that issue as well. She feels she is strongly opposed to this application, in great part because of the parking conflicts that she sees. We anticipate greatly increased noise, traffic, trash. And this house was built as a fairly standard, if I'm not mistaken, three-bedroom house of the period. Think of your own homes, if you've got a three-bedroom house. Would your home be able to accommodate parties of 60 people? It's not likely that the house itself is going to contain those people. They are going to flow out and make a lot of noise, create a lot of trash in the neighborhood. This will be a nuisance property, and we are strongly opposed to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Evan Weber.
Hello, all. I'm speaking on behalf of Little Rock Central High School and National Historic Site. As the facility manager, Evan Weber, I can tell you that we strongly oppose. We have spent funding, our own park budget funding, to get conditions and assessments on all the homes. And also, we have partnered with the Little Rock Central High School to get this area, this park boundary, these homes to be a part of a world heritage site. And it's been nominated, but once it is selected, that will bring additional funding to keep these homes residential and get certain repairs, maintenance, done to the interior and exterior of these homes. So, it has been park funding that has went into getting conditions and assessments, getting this area to stay residential and considered to be a world heritage site. Those are the things that we wish for that area, and that's why we strongly oppose. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last card I have is Joyce Matthews. How much time do we have remaining for the opposition?
12:45.
Joyce Matthews. 12 minutes.
12 minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Joyce Matthews. I live at 1415 South Park. My house is between, or it sits within the latitude of all of the houses in this proposed plan. I am also the past president of the Little Rock, I mean, of the Central High Neighborhood Association. A little bit about myself, I am a Desert Storm veteran, and I have issues, and I take issues with this. First of all, I have been involved with this planning, plan, this proposal since the beginning, when it came in 2004, when the National Park Service had another superintendent there. The planning board, at that time, did not approve it to go forward, but it did go to the Board of Directors, and there was some type of compromise, and it was agreed that it could become a quiet office district. It never took place. These properties have never existed and operated to what is being presented to you. Okay? I am very familiar with the property owner, Ms. Blashtam, and we have worked together in trying to maintain a quiet office district, but nothing has ever taken fruition, fruition, in trying to make some type of progress to form some type of strategy, so she could get people to come to her proposed 1417 house. At that time, it was named Park Central Little Rock. So, and it also had the name Addie Wesley Hayes House. So, now we're going back to the Addie Hayes house, and that was to honor the activities and all the things that was her parents had gone through and contributed to the civil rights movement and segregation at that time. So, and it was done in West Helena. This has been explained to the applicant time and time again, that you can't transplant history, and now here we are again. But this time, we want a spot change. You want a spot, you want to put it, a spot change and change it into a commercial district. My voice is trembling because the buttons has been pushed. So, y'all, please forgive me for my nervousness in talking to you. 60 people in this house, to parties or anything else. Once it is passed, you can't control that. In the afternoon, there is 28 buses that parked in front of my house, all along Park Street. You can't move from 2:30 until 4 o'clock. Nothing moves, period. There is a pad in the back of this house for parking. She put that there. The other part is it has had suspicious activity. Police has been called, and it's not her fault, but it had become a haven for homeless people. And we've addressed that, we, myself, and the neighbors and the National Parks. We have policed these houses ourselves. It takes the police at least 30 to 45 minutes to come across town to do something. And when they come, the people are gone. So, we put ourselves in harm's way in trying to police these areas. So, the city of Little Rock, you don't have enough police to police if anything goes on, and it takes the time to get there. In front of my house, within the last four months, or six, five months, we've had incidents where the security across the street had to prevent a shooting or murder, or whatever you want to call it. They prevented it. It was right in front of my house. They had to prevent it. Then we had other things, and these are things that I'm bringing up. And these are maybe's. I didn't say this is in my head, that it's going to go on. I've had people come across the fence. I had my fence cut in the backyard. I don't know who they, I can't say she did it, but I can just say I've had trespassing from that property to mine. This house also adjacent, a property that the city owns. We, the Central High neighborhood, we got it permission, and they've had some things. Anyway, the city took this house out of condemned, and they, 1419, that sits right next to it, and it has, it is a potential to be a code enforcement house for us. Now, it will sit in a commercial plan, commercial district. I don't know how that's going to work. So, we need answers to all of these. What happened from then? What changed so until now the city or the Planning Commission can see, they see, well, okay, your property value go up. It's not about property value going up. It's about maintaining a neighborhood that's residential. I talk to people from all over the world that comes to up and down that street, and they want to know, boy, you all got a neighborhood. This is safe. But then again, well, why don't they do something to the houses? Well, talking to the National Park Service and some of, and one of our past presidents, we got ourselves put into the Central High, National Park Boundary with the help of our congressmen, our senators, and believe it or not, the President of the United States, 45. He signed it for us to get this. So, we put in a lot of effort for condition assessments, and we've gone to the extent of bringing in contractors from outside of the city that were federal contractors, and people to go in and see what has to be done to initiate and put funding in this and to include Ms. Daisy Bates' house. So, I asked the question, what changed? All of a sudden, you're going against your own policies and processes. I don't understand. Help me understand. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I think it's the opportunity for the applicant to address the opposition. Keep in mind, there's 20 minutes for the applicant as well.
Is it, it's my turn? Okay. All right, fine. Hello. Yes. Hi. My name is Onisha Blagden, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be with all of you and for all of you to review my application and my motion for 1417 South Park. This house is, I treasure it myself. My family there. This house is really for the whole community. My family, I believe, paved the future by opening the door of this house on 1417 South Park to you all in the community. My goal is to continue a partnership with the city by rezoning this property and by doing so to help facilitate and collaborate with the citizens in the city and with you all in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant or the agent of the applicant?
This is Commissioner, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Thomas. It's for the applicant. I am kind of familiar with that area, kind of drove over there to look at it. And the issue of parking, how is that going to be addressed?
May I address that on behalf of the applicant? The house, 1417, has adequate parking according to the ordinance in 2006 for off-street parking. We are well aware that during the day, during nine months of the year, you have school bus parking in the morning, roughly 8:30 to 10:00, and then from 2:30 to 4:00, you have school bus parking. Park Street is not accessible during that time. It's going to be up to the project manager, the property manager, to schedule events around those two events, the parking of buses. Of course, they're not going to schedule any event during those time periods. So, the applicant has to be conscious of that fact. The property manager will be conscious of the fact that parking is limited during nine months during the year. During the summer months, there's no issue with parking. There are events at the school that you have teachers, parents, students who park, but Mrs. Matthews has a driveway that's clearly indicated not to be blocked. I don't know if that has occurred before, but people are sensitive about her parking slot, her driveway. So, I don't think there's an issue with parking, given the nine-month period where there's school bus parking. If it's after school, yes, you don't have any, you have no parking issue after school.
Commissioner Thomas, does that answer your question?
Not really, but I guess that's what it is, but not really.
Okay. Would the applicant like to elaborate?
I'm sorry?
Would the applicant like to elaborate? I don't think the question is.
I'm not too sure much more what I can say in terms of parking. We have parking on both sides of the street, on both sides of the street.
Let me clarify my question. I guess if the, if the structure is going to be allowed to accommodate 60 guests, so let's just say half of that, where would 30 people park?
Both sides of Park Street. Park Street is one way south. So, there's parking at least 40 cars, 20 on each side at least.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up. So, I understand from reading the materials that parking is not Um, so, I understand from reading the materials that parking is not permitted on Park Street during school hours. So, I guess, I just want a little clarification just to follow up on Commissioner Thomas's question. From eight to four during the school year, where will sixty people park if they attend an event at this location?
Our response is that the property manager, well aware of the restrictions of parking during the school time, will not schedule any events during that time period. That would be at the level of sixty people. There might be an event that's maybe three people, four people, that could still park on Park Street, utilize that facility during school hours.
I guess what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand the concerns of the opposition, and I hear you saying that the property manager can exercise discretion and not, uh, schedule sixty-person events during the school hours, but is the opposition correct that there is no control or nothing that prohibits that? That the property manager could, it, it may not be well advised, but as the proposal is written today before us, the property manager could schedule theoretically a sixty-person event at ten AM for which there would be no parking on Park Street? Is that, is that, do I understand at least that part? That's part A of my question.
We have to be considerate of the fact that the applicant is sensitive of these restrictions. They are wanting to provide a, a venue that is not a party house, but a venue that could have many different types of events, not all sixty folk. It could be a small meeting, it could be just anyone who wants to have the atmosphere of a house, a residential house, in front of and within a historic site. We have to be sensitive and conscious that the applicant is not just wanting to say, I want sixty folk every day at this house at ten, ten, ten AM. She is quite sensitive.
But that's how, that's, I'm asking a different question, but that's how your proposal is written, that you want us to approve, the option for a sixty-person event during school hours. Do I have that part correct? That, that is what you're requesting? Whether or not you'll do it, I'm asking, is that, that's what you're requesting?
That's the, that's the limitation based on the discussion with farmer ops and other folk, that you can have up to sixty folk. It's not to say that's going to be our game plan, that we have a mission or a, a, a program to at least get sixty folk every day. It's just a limitation. It's just a.
I understand that, and I don't, I don't want to step on your line because I don't want to belabor it. I have a part B to my question, and then I want to get out of the way. Assuming there's a sixty-person event at ten AM during school, have you or the, uh, or the applicant or the project manager considered in advance where these sixty people would park, and can you tell me where that would be?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to maybe repeat myself. The sixty-folk count is just a limitation. It's saying we cannot go above sixty folk. That's the limitation. Doesn't mean that in their planning of events, that they may arbitrarily or just consciously say, we can only do twenty people, let's just do that for the first year. We know we have a sixty-folk limit. It might be a time period in the summer during a, 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 a weekend that they may be able to do sixty, but it's just a limitation. I don't, I, you have to establish a limit. The limit is dictated by ordinance, by code, and that's what they're stating. It's not in their program or in their, how do you say, their, their game plan to shoot for sixty folk every time we have an event. It's just a limit, just a, it's a goal. It's not necessarily a goal, it's, it's the limit that's imposed by ordinance and code. Doesn't mean that.
Okay, and I have one, I, I, I'm sorry, I have one more quick follow-up question. Has the applicant addressed with the community their concerns about loss of funding for the World Heritage Site if this, if this particular neighborhood does not maintain a residential footprint? Have you all had that on your mind?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the application for the World Heritage Site that's been on and off for the last ten years. Uh, we're not familiar with that, but surely the folk from, from that organization have surveyed the site. They recognize the physical presence of the houses along that street, and surely it's, if it's going to be part of that boundary, no one knows. It may just be the boundary of the school. We don't know. I, I don't think that we should bring up World Heritage Sites without having the detailed information about what they have surveyed. They have actually come to the site, this overall site, and they've made reports. I don't know the status of that application, but surely if it's being considered, they have recognized that there are residential lighthouses along that street and what part did they play in the, in the story. And for them to make a determination based on the zoning of each house, I don't think we can use that as a determination of this particular application.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your answers.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodge. I think there's a couple other questions in the room from commissioners.
I've got one. I appreciate the public bearing with us. This VRBO bed and breakfast thing has been a, like a challenge for the city and is a challenge for a lot of cities. Later on in today's agenda, we're going to look at zoning ordinance amendment to add short-term rental. So, uh, it's not approved yet, it's just a draft, and so, Sean, don't, don't let me stick my foot in my mouth here, but I, I, I believe that in, I know that in this particular draft amendment, under Article Four, it says, "Hosting of private parties and special events such as weddings, receptions, and other similar gatherings is not allowed in short-term rentals." So, I'm assuming this home is, this application is falling under the short-term rental concept, right? That's what this, that's what this is, and even though this has not been adopted yet or even voted on yet by the city board, it appears to be the intent that if short-term rentals are allowed, they're not going to be allowed for weddings and receptions and parties and other things. So, I, I'm just looking at this going, why would we vote to approve something that, that potentially is going to be sort of grandfathered in, we hear, within the next couple months?
I don't know about the grandfathering. I think that's an issue that we have to address. Director Collins, would you like to?
Yeah, I can, I can address that. Even though what they would do technically would be renting, uh, for events, uh, the short-term rental ordinance that we're going to present at the end of this meeting is really for that Airbnb people, you know, renting like a hotel motel. It's not events. When we do events, this application is actually a PCD. It's a planned, uh, commercial development. When you approve a planned development, it is approved as presented, you know, the conditions, the time, uh, operation. So, I think there was a question raised previously on what would happen if they had an event at ten o'clock or eleven o'clock or past the hours of operation, and calling the police is the only remedy. That is the remedy at that time that they're holding, that they would call the police and they'd come out and document. But the ultimate remedy is if they are not following the agreed-upon conditions in the planned commercial development, then the, uh, staff can present to the planning commission a revocation if they are not adhering to the conditions of the planned development at any given point in time during operations. And then that, and if approved for revocation, then that could also go to the board. We typically cite, uh, the property like we would any commercial, uh, property when they are not adhering to the, a condition of zoning, uh, to comply, and they would go before, uh, the environmental court, district court for, uh, for judicial processing. But if it continues and, and it becomes a nuisance for stuff they are against on their conditions, then there is a process to revoke the planned development. So, I would just want to make that clear. I think there was somebody in opposition that was, uh, asking a question on remedy of what would happen if they was outside of their conditions.
Thank you for that clarification. Dr. Benton, I think you had a.
You had one for the applicant. Have they spent any time talking with the neighbors that were opposed?
I'm not too sure if she's going to respond, but I'm aware of the fact that she has reached out to the Central High School Neighborhood Association. We had a Zoom meeting several months ago. Uh, she has contacted the principal at Central High School. She's made contact with superintendent at the National Park Service. Keep in mind, there's only, other than Mrs. Matthews, there's only one person living on, the other person living on that street, Mrs. Williams further to the south. So, in terms of reaching out, Dr. Benton, she has done what she felt to be transparent, to inform, uh, the neighbors or whomever might be interested in what's going to happen in that house in terms of, of, of her intent. And, um, in discussing this with, uh, Ms. Blackden, we felt that she's done what is normally expected. You go to the Neighborhood Association first, you talk to your neighbors. She's, she's constant talking with Mrs. Matthews about her intent. We've done all that we can do to inform, uh, the immediate neighborhood of the intent of this particular project. So, I think we've covered our bases in that respect.
Thank you. I think, go ahead, Dr. Benton.
I was just thinking.
I think Commissioner Hodge had a question as well. You're on mute still.
My question actually was for Jamie, but I think I found the answer in the materials. It was a clarification of Commissioner Hart's question that when the premise is being used as a short rental, the applicant cannot simultaneously book any event.
Correct.
Okay, that was, okay.
Thank you.
It's all in the scheduling. The, they're going to have to look at the schedule, uh, days ahead and to determine if there is a, a, a request for short-term rental, that they not have events before or after, because you have to maintain the property, you have to give time for that to occur. So, no, it's not the intent to have simultaneous Airbnb and events at the same time, simultaneously same time, yeah.
Are there any mother, any more questions by the commissioners?
This is recommended for approval by the staff or what?
Yes, sir.
It was.
Commissioner, I, I would just say, uh, to the applicant, due to.
Hold on one second, I think we have two people talking. Doctor, or Mr. Brooks is going to speak first.
Thank you. Due to the, uh, the issues that I foresee, um, problems with the parking, uh, I know we dealt with that, uh, during school, but there's events after school, uh, there's a lot of events after school, and, um, I see that being an issue as well. Problems with, um, events being held there with alcohol, um, being right across the street from the school, that's a concern of mine, and, uh, because of the history of the neighborhood, uh, it is, and always has been designed as a residential neighborhood, and for those reasons, I am going to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Okay, I think there was a little confusion earlier, but, um, was there another person speaking before Mr. Brooks had his comments online? I think we do have some other, um, people online wishing to speak about this item. If you're online and would like to speak about this item, can you please raise your hand?
I have a question. If.
Go ahead.
This, um, what Mr. Collins said about the PCD zoning, um, do all short-term rentals have to have the PCD zoning? Or, I'm sorry, the P, the PCD zoning?
Um, well, uh, without going into a full presentation, there are two types of, of short-term rentals that we see, really is divided upon whether somebody lives at the residence and is going to rent out, say, rooms, or maybe lives in a home and rents out the back, a back accessory building or dwelling, and, uh, a property that the property owner does not live at the address, they are remote, uh, that'll be a different process. So, one of them, if you're essentially occupied, owner occupied, it will be a special use permit that would go to the planning commission. If it is a, um, non-owner occupied, they are not at the property, is, will go through a planned development process, and both of those two processes can approve a zoning based upon conditions and also based upon specific ownership, so it does not necessarily transfer once a property is sold. It would be for that entity.
Okay, thank you. And, um, Mr. Vogel, I have to recuse myself from this one.
Applicant, is there anything else you would like to say in response to the commission, or is your presentation completed?
No. No, I'm, I've completed my presentation. Thank you.
And no one online has raised their hand to speak? Okay. Thank you. At this time, I think it would be appropriate for a motion.
I, uh, move that we approve item Z seven-nine-six-five-a, including all steps, comments, and conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Benton?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Hart?
No.
Haynes?
No.
Hodge?
No.
Latour?
Sorry, no.
McDonald?
McKees.
Thomas?
No.
Vickers? Vickers?
No.
Vogel?
No.
Nine O's, one R.
Thank you, applicant. We appreciate your efforts to try and revitalize a community that I think definitely needs help, and I understand the opposition's position as well. So, um, thank you again for your application, and, um, please work with staff to continue if you'd like to make another application. That said, uh, before the reading of the next item, I am going to have to recuse myself from this due to an affiliation with a adjacent property. So, I'm going to pass the, uh, the chair to Vice Chair Dr. Benton for this one. There are none.
Staff, would you read that?
Okay, the next item is item number four, file number Z fifty-eight-hundred-E. This is the Bowman Business Park Revised P O D, fifteen-fifteen through fifteen-twenty-seven South Bowman Road. The applicant proposes to amend the previously approved P O D zoning for this location, uh, again, fifteen-fifteen through fifteen-twenty-seven South Bowman Road by adding two uses as permitted uses. The P O D for this property was established in nineteen ninety-four for an office park-type use. Uh, does, was approved for four buildings, and there are currently four buildings on the site. The applicant proposes an automotive. currently four buildings on the site. The applicant proposes an automotive service center use to be located within Building One, which is at 1515 South Bowman Road. That's the westernmost building on the property. The automotive service center will occupy 12,800 square feet of the space located in Suite E, and this proposed use is an auto body shop. The applicant proposes to add an automotive detail shop as a second use located at 1527 South Bowman Road. This is Building Number Four, which will be the easternmost building, then Suite B, and it will occupy approximately 3,000 square feet of that building. Business hours for both uses will be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday with 10 employees for each use. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the existing footprint of the buildings, and the other allowable uses under the existing P O D will remain unchanged. Staff does not support the requested revision to the P O D zoning. Staff feels that an auto body shop and an auto detail shop are not appropriate uses for this existing office park type use. The proposed uses align more with permitted uses in C4 zoning. A more appropriate location for the proposed auto-related heavy commercial uses would be closer to major arterial intersections. The Cherry Creek neighborhood lies immediately to the west across Bowman Road, with all the budding properties being zoned residential or office. Staff believes the requested heavy commercial uses will have an adverse impact on the surrounding properties and would be difficult to control with respect to activities occurring outside the buildings. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the revised P O D zoning.
Is applicant present? Is anyone in opposition present? Applicant, we can hear from you.
Jerry Burris, architect, representing the owners of the property. We developed this facility back in 1994. It's been there almost 30 years. If y'all familiar with it, we're next to the skating rink that's been there a little longer than we have. But my clients maintain all of their property in excellent condition. I would encourage you to drive by. Our development, we've set the buildings back to really present a nice image to Bowman, which is currently undergoing expansion because of all the increased traffic that's taking place between Colonel Glenn and Canis. You know, that whole area has really increased in commercial traffic. We have had uses in there, and staff and planning commission has worked with us over the last 25 years. We had the Arkansas Democrat Gazette occupy half of one of the facilities, and that was a West Little Rock Distribution Center. You can imagine trucks coming and going, delivering papers, individual routes picking up, never any complaints, never any disturbances with any of the neighbors or the existing residential neighborhood. Davis Properties maintains their properties. Not only, and I'll just comment on staff's remark about hard to police this, the owner's going to police this, because what Davis Properties does not want is another tenant to be upset with what a new tenant might or might not be doing. So they're very much self-policing developers. They do stay on top of any requirements. Anything they agree to is going to be met, and I think they've got a proven track record here in the city of Little Rock with probably a half a million square feet of development spread out in the Little Rock area. We have agreed to all the conditions that staff has requested, that all work takes place inside, enclosed within the buildings. There's no salvaging, no vehicles to be stored on the site for any period exceeding 30 days. Any storage will take place in the rear service areas, which are not visible from adjoining neighbors and/or streetscape. Any damaged vehicles will be parked behind the building. In thinking, and we see the term of a lot of traffic, our experience with having done other auto body shop facilities, this is certainly not like a Crane or a Landers where they've got this huge lot and 300 vehicles parked outside. This is a very small operation. The reality of something of this size probably wouldn't have more than six workstations inside, just because it takes room around the workstation when you're working on a vehicle. I would just request that planning commission consider the big picture, and while I certainly respect staff, I think a lot of Little Rock Planning Department, they're excellent to work with. On this issue, I would like to see approval of what my client is requesting.
Are there any questions? I'll have the commissioners to the applicant.
Yes, what was the, to staff, what was the reasoning for, again, for the denial of this?
This particular property was developed as an office park. It is Office on the Future Plan, and the use, or it actually Service Trades District, which is more of an office, office warehouse type use. The uses proposed are heavy commercial, an auto body shop and auto detailing, and we just felt that that's not appropriate, that those are not appropriate uses for this proposed development.
I don't believe we have any cards, anybody online to oppose. I believe it would be appropriate to take a motion for this. My City Fifth Chairman Vogel, it would not be appropriate for me to make the motion.
I could make a motion. I'd make a motion. We approve item four, subject to all staff comments with the exception of staff's recommendation for denial.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Betten?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Hart?
No.
Haynes?
No.
Hodge?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Vickers? Vickers?
No.
Vogel?
Vogel recused.
I'm sorry, my camera was off. I turned it back on. It's Commissioner Hodge, and I need to make my vote on camera, so I need to redo it.
Just go ahead and restate your vote, please.
I'm sorry, I forgot. It was, it's the motion, I'm sorry.
The motion was for approval of item four, the Bowman Business Park Revised P O D, with all staff comments with the exception of staff's recommendation of denial.
And my vote is yes.
Okay, all right. Two A's, seven O's, one recused, motion fails.
Applicant, thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry the vote did not go your way. Obviously, if the applicant wants to try a different application, you're welcome to work with staff. So thank you very much for your time. Yes, sir. We have item number five. May we have a reading?
Item number five, file number Z 7021C. This is Zarate Bar and Grill PDC located at 6512 Mableville Cut Off. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property located at 6512 Mableville Cut Off from R2 Single Family to PDC Planned Development Commercial to allow for the renovation of the existing 2,406 square foot building for use as a bar and grill and a rental space for events such as weddings and birthdays. This property is approximately 3.07 acres in size. The property is currently, again, zoned R2, contains a 2,406 square foot commercial building, which has a history of being used as a roller skating rink. There is a cell tower location located at the northeast corner of the property with a fenced enclosure and a service drive along the north side of the building. Site plan shows the reuse of the existing parking lot to the east of the building with 62 parking spaces and access from Mableville Cut Off to the south. The proposed parking configuration is less than the typical required minimum for this particular use, which will be 204 spaces, and that is as per Section 36502-3C of the code. Staff does not support the requested PDC zoning. Staff does not believe that the request is reasonable. The staff believes the proposed use is not appropriate due to the site's very close proximity to the surrounding residential developments. The property is designated as RL, Low Density Residential, by the city's future land use plan, and is located adjacent to R2 zone properties along all property boundaries. Staff believes that the proposed use will have an adverse impact on the surrounding residential properties, and that a lower intense office use or residential development would be most appropriate for this property. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested PDC zoning.
Thank you for that reading. Is the applicant or a representative here? As is customary, applicant, you can defer your opportunity to speak until after you hear from the opposition, or you can speak now and defer the remainder of your time until after the opposition has spoken.
My name is Kenneth Roberts, architect. This is J.J. Zarate, he's the owner. I will pretty much defer most of it, but I did want to say that I'm kind of surprised being that when we walked in and this PDC was actually suggested to us by the planning department. So we're kind of surprised by the all of a sudden, this isn't what you should be doing. Very surprised, actually, because I've gone back and forth with them via email and voice for some time, because first off, oddly enough, his civil engineer was correct, apparently, whereas I was thinking it was a kind of odd situation, whereas we went into the, to the department within a whole other permit application and as advised by the civil engineer. So when we got there, they were, we were advised by the staff to change it to the PDC, and then therefore our civil engineer basically dropped him as a client, long-term client, mind you, and said, find another civil engineer. This is never going to get approved by the city, and here we are. So there was very some weird, I don't understand that quite honestly, why it was suggested, and now they're against it when they are the one who just suggested it and pretty much steered us in that direction.
Thank you, applicant. Would you like to use the rest of your time for the opposition, or defer the rest of your time to the opposition, or do you want to continue?
I would like to defer. Just, if anybody needs to talk, that's fine.
Yeah, perfect. We have two cards for people who are present, but first, let's start with, is there anybody online in opposition of item number five that would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand, and we will allow you. Seeing no opposition online, we have Troy Leahy, who would like to speak in opposition. So applicant, if you would give them the podium for a moment. Keep in mind, opposition, y'all have 20 minutes total, so there are two cards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of Little Rock Planning Commission and Little Rock Planning Staff. I'm Troy Leahy, and I am Vice President of Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. On May the 2nd, we met, and I had invited the architect, I believe, Roberts, Mr. Roberts, to attend our meeting, and he declined. No response from him at all. The neighbors around this facility, which are, I usually say mostly grown people, they're in their 80s and 90s, and they don't work too well with being kept awake at night at 3:00, 4:00, and 5:00 o'clock in the morning with loud noises going on. Some of them have called the Little Rock Police, complained about the noise and all, but by the time the police arrived, the noise makers have left. And Southwest Little Rock United for Progress would appreciate your decline in this application, and they don't, we don't think we need this facility in Southwest Little Rock. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next person in opposition is Mildred Walker. Mildred Walker.
Yes, good evening.
Thank you.
I'm a resident in Yorkwood Neighborhood Association and the Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. We met, like Troy stated, on May the 2nd, for anyone that had submitted an application for a new business, and due to the fact, he, Jesus Martinez, I may pronounce that wrong, but Jesus Martinez, he did not show. And we, as residents of the neighborhood, we do not feel that we need a bar and grill. We wasn't presented any information of what their tents were going to be due to the no-show. And Mableville Cut Off is already in trouble with traffic. It's a nuisance, and we constantly have to call the Little Rock PD. Last week, we had three accidents on Mableville Cut Off within four days. That's a lot in a neighborhood resident area. So we feel that we do not need a bar and grill where you are allowed to sell alcohol, period. So we are coming to you tonight to ask for your support and your vote to vote no to the bar and grill on Mableville Cut Off, that is 6512 Mableville Cut Off. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would the applicant like to use the remainder of their time?
First off, I would like to apologize, Mr. Leahy. We actually used to work together on projects, but I was out of town. I did get your message after I got back. It was quite late, so apologize for that. It was only an hour before the meeting, though. But anyways, seeing what else. So the noise, I don't know what that is referring to, because it actually, to correct the, saying that it is unoccupied, it actually is a functioning skating rink at the moment. Young kids, couldn't imagine too much noise. I do know that he's spray-fumed the whole interior, and we've actually noise-tested it, and once you shut the door, there is absolutely no sound five feet outside the door with full volume all the way up, which is not ever all the way up. So there is business going on there. No one lives there, being that it is zoned R2. I'm not really sure where that came from. And then what else is liquor, beer? There's a grocery store down the street. I don't know if they serve that, but I mean, we live in Little Rock, there's plenty of places to get it. It's not uncommon for that to be in every single gas station, much less It's not uncommon for that to be in every single gas station, much less a very high quality. I mean, he has very nice plans for this. Everything is above par. He's a contractor. He's renovated such buildings as the Presidential Holiday Inn downtown, plenty of hotels. So, he does know about code. He is planned about, he's planned for all this stuff. And basically, we've just come asking, again, going back to where I'm going, or where I started was, basically asking advisants going down the planning commission, and like I said, we were basically routed in one direction, and this is it right here. I was actually wanting to pull my permit, or pull it until this next month because of the civil engineer situation, but we wanted, you know, if there was the ability to go forward with it, we wanted to do it. So, you know, I asked if I could do, I guess they were asking for a revised site plan, and being that we only submitted a survey, which is exactly what you're supposed to submit for a, you know, like a Zone C3, for instance. Whereas with the PDs, you're supposed to produce a, I guess, a revised site plan on what the future development would hold. So, being that we were all of a sudden, so to speak, fired from our own consultants because of this choice, we were kind of left in a bad spot. And so, I did, you know, I tried to make kind of a sketch, so to speak, just to kind of showcase that, you know, we are trying to match what was needed for parking, toilets, you know, all that good stuff that we all know about. And then, you know, it told me back that, well, that's going to spur a whole nother thing, and so why don't you just keep it as is, which is what you all see right here on the screen? And so, I did exactly what everybody at the department told me to do along the way. While I did think it was strange, because I do do these about, not every year, they don't come up that often, but I have done in my 15, 20 years of being an architect, I've done at least 10 to 12, and none of them have been unsuccessful. And I've never tried to do anything that was not allowed in any certain district or zoning or anything like that. So, I have had no problems anywhere near like this. And I just feel like it's, I don't know, it's just been kind of, you know, just bad advisement. There's been like facts left out, the city future plan. Everything, you know, as far as remarks were given to us several, like I guess a month ago, very boilerplate, typical stuff. It was basically the same remarks that every single other person got in this meeting today, except that the only thing different today was what they had mentioned as far as the city future plan. So, it's, you know, every time I've gone in there beforehand, I've gotten very good advisement, and, you know, if something's a no-go, then it's a no-go, and we don't, I don't pursue it. But I didn't get that, and I actually got the opposite. And so, he spent a lot of money doing all this. I've spent a lot of time, and they spend a lot of time, we're spending a lot of time right now. And I just think all that could have been avoided if there was a little more, I guess, transparency maybe, or like forthcoming, why are they suggesting something that was never going to happen in the first place? I don't know. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant by the commission?
Yes, I have several questions.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
All right. First of all, thank you for your application. I have a question. When was the last time there was a skating party or an event at that location? I'm very familiar with.
I believe it actually opened up a year before he bought it again, according to, I was looking at it this last weekend, according to reviews online from people that have been there. And then he bought it at some point. There was actually, it ended, I think that was the reason why they could not sell it up until a certain point, is they actually had a contract with the Little Rock School Department for their kids in those certain elementary schools to come there Tuesday or Thursday for recess and skate for free and stuff like that as part of a, you know, neighborhood initiative situation. And that continued up until, I guess, the former owners sold it when that, it was like a 20-year contract, I think. And so, while maybe most of the time it was not open to the public, I guess the last year, as that contract was nearing an end, they did open it back up. And then I believe he continues that, like, just on the weekend, I believe.
So, the date of the last skating event is what?
A.
I mean, a roundabout date estimate?
Private parties, or?
We open every Saturday from 5:00 to 11:00 only.
I'm asking that question because I'm familiar with the Southwest location, and I live close by, and I have not seen any traffic on a Saturday within the last seven months over there. I know there's been construction, but I have not seen any cars due to any type of events going on. So, that's my reason for asking that question. So, will it continue to be a skating rink on the inside along with the bar and grill? Or we're just doing, you're doing away with the skating rink, and how is, what are the plans for that?
If I'm going to get the permit, I mean, if I'm going to get the permit from you guys, I'm going to continue the bar and grill only.
Okay. Next question. Have you met with the residents that's within 200 feet to discuss plans and future plans for this location?
No, I haven't talked to any, but I have talked to two, the one on the backside, since I buy the building, and I asked him if any trouble around the area, and they say no. So, what I did to the buildings is, since I'm a contractor licensed, I use some type of material that is no, the sound, it can go out of the building. So, you can go behind the street, you will not hear anything from inside the building.
Got you. And for me, that's not my reason for asking due to the sound. I just think it's important, just for all applicants, just going forward, that you all take time, especially when you're going to do something inside of a residential neighborhood, to take time to talk to the neighbors. They're the ones who have to live there. They're the ones who have to put up with the traffic and whatever else is going to come through the business. So, it's very key that you talk to those residents. Bar and a grill in the middle of that community, again, I'm well familiar with that. I don't agree with it, and there is so many accidents just throughout the year over there, and there's very, very, very high speeding on that Mayville Cut Off. And for those reasons, along with having a bar with alcohol, I will not vote for this agenda item. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? One second, Director Collins would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I would like to provide some clarification for the applicant on our process, and also the reasoning for a plan development. One, we accept applications for whatever the applicant wants to do on the rezoning. That does not constitute support of an application to be brought before the planning commission. It is, we are bound to process it. We are also bound pursuant to our codes and ordinances adopted and state law, guide the application to the correct process that is to be done. Underneath our zoning code, this property was brought in, annexed into the city, and if I'm correct, I think it was annexed in by vote into the city. And the process is, is when it gets annexed into the city, it generally defaults to R2 zoning, and then properties can request rezoning to certain, you know, uses during that process. If not, then it becomes what we would deem legally non-conforming uses that are on there. And that's what this property was prior to this application as a skating rink. Underneath our zoning codes for legally conforming or non-conforming uses, it falls underneath what we would call expansion. A non-conforming use shall not be extended, expanded, enlarged, or increased in intensity to any structure. So, in other words, you can operate as you were before. So, same building size, same use, you're legally non-conforming. When it is proposed to be something different, like the bar and grill, that is a planned development. Specifically says in the continuance of it, any rezoning of the property, which had to happen because of the non-conforming use, the change of use, the increase in intensity of use, accompanied by a non-conforming use, shall be accomplished through a planned development process. We do not have a choice. That is the process. That was the guidance that they were received. Again, we don't approve or deny the zoning. We recommend to this body. And then as a planned development, then that action of the planning commission, if approved, is recommended to the Board of Directors, because it is a legislative action at that time. So, guidance of an application does not necessitate an approval of it. That is at the planning commission's vote and at the Board of Directors' vote. So, I just wanted to clarify the process of what needed to happen for that. And when we receive applications, sometimes we receive applications from entities wanting to do straight zoning for a property, but pursuant to our codes, once we receive the application and review it, that is not the process that needs to happen. So, I just wanted to clarify why the planned development process, and they were directed that way, because that is the correct process.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have a question for the applicant at this time?
I have one for Mr. Collins. Was this explanation given to the applicant when they were going through the process?
As far as why we were having to do the PDC, I mean, vaguely, not really. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I can't remember as far as like exactly if they really told, I don't know if it was clear or not. I don't, I guess in short term, no, it was not clear. We were just said, told that that was the way that is the easiest, because with the straight-up zoning, you're going to have to go and do X, Y, and Z after that. I forget what that terminology was used, but there was a whole nother process you're going to have to use if we just went in and said, I want it to be Zone C3, which is what, you know, obviously, the proper zoning for a skating rink, C31, you know, C1 through 3, whatever it might be, should be for that property. And so, that's kind of where we were going with it. And then, you know, it was mentioned that we just had to not only do the zoning change, but then do a second step, and that during the PDC would basically combine the steps into a more streamlined process, I guess. I guess, that's what I remember two months ago, you know, so.
Commissioner Hodge with, this is Jamie, with that explanation, like I said, sometimes we receive applications that offer specific zoning for like straight zoning. It is our job to review that and see if it meets the code. If you're asking the question, do we sit down and explain, as I did, you know, of the exact reason why for that is non-conforming? I cannot speak to that. I was not the one that was speaking to him. Mr. Moore might be able to answer that question. But at any given point in time, that process is reviewed, and any application is reviewed all the way up to the director level for what the process is. And, you know, if the application was originally C3, and the direction to the applicant that it needed to go, planned development, that was the correct interpretation of our codes.
And I have no problem with that.
Yeah, Robert, just one comment to the applicant. You're not getting the shaft here, guys.
No.
I've been dealing with planning commissions a long time, usually in your position as the applicant and not as a commissioner or staff. And the PCD route, while it was the right route to take, it, I believe it gives you the best shot of getting your project approved. Straight zoning, even if you could have gone that route, planning commissions in general, it's harder for a planning commissioner to wrap his mind around any of those 50 uses, right, in C3.
Very vague, very broad.
As opposed to just one use. So, you're, I think you're better off right now with the PCD and proposing a specific use. That doesn't mean it would pass tonight, but I think you're better off.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And overall, I just, I mean, I like, like I said, I go down there like every once in a while, every year, and it's all good. It was just kind of, this is a weird one.
Well, everybody's been given the opportunity to speak, who would like to, and I think if there's no more questions, it'd be in order to have a motion.
I'd move for the approval of item Z7021C, including all staff comments and conditions except the recommendation of denial.
Thank you. I think we had a second. I think Commissioner Haynes said second, if I was listening. Is that correct?
Vickers.
I'm not sure if Vickers said second. Okay, sorry. We have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Before we do that, let's refresh our minds what a yes or no vote means.
Okay. So, do you want to take this one, Director Collins?
Take this one, since we always have to provide a motion for a vote in the positive. So, it does seem kind of confusing at times. So, whenever staff recommends denial, then you start to make a motion in the positive, hence, recommendation of approval, except staff's recommendation of denial. Therefore, when you vote for this item, when you vote yes for this item, you are voting for approval of the item. When you vote no, you are voting for denial of the item.
Everybody understand that, just like the previous vote we took? So, all right, we'll take a roll call vote.
Bettin?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Hart?
No.
Haynes?
Oh.
Hart?
No.
Hodge?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Motion was, accept the recommendation of denial.
Correct.
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no, for Commissioner Hodge.
Latour?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Thomas?
No.
No.
Vickers?
No.
Vogel?
Yes.
Nine to one motion.
Yes.
Thank you, applicant. We appreciate your application, and certainly you have an option to come back with another application. So, thank you very much for your time, and appreciate you being here. I think that takes us to item six, so may we have a reading?
Item six, file number Z7870A. This is the King Seasonal Fireworks Sales Revised PCD located at 23-800-Highway-10. The applicant is requesting to revise a PCD, planned commercial development zoning for this property, to allow the seasonal sale of fireworks on the existing 2.75 acre site located at 23-800-Highway-10. The previously approved PCD zoning, which occurred in 2007, was to allow C3 uses for the property in addition to the- This is the King Seasonal Fireworks Sales Revised PCD located at 23800 Highway 10. The applicant is requesting to revise a PCD, planned commercial development zoning for this property, to allow the seasonal sale of fireworks on the existing 2.75 acre site located at 23800 Highway 10. The previously approved PCD zoning, which occurred in 2007, was to allow C3 uses for the property. In addition to that, it was to allow the sale of autos and portable buildings, landscape nursery, and limited outdoor storage of farm supplies. The property currently contains an existing commercial office building along the west perimeter and a convenience store with gas pumps along Highway 10. A proposed tent structure is to be located at the center of the overall property, which contains the remains of the landscape business and a fence along the north property line. The property is boarded by Barrett Road to the west and Highway 10 along the south perimeter. The proposed temporary tent structure is to be up June 10th, 2022, and removed on July 10th, 2022. The sale of fireworks will occur between June 24th and July 5th. The hours of operation will be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. June 24th through July 2nd and July 5th, and 8:00 a.m. to midnight, July 3rd and July 4th. Staff is not supportive of the requested revised PCD to allow this use. The proposed temporary use of the center portion of the site is not compatible with uses on the remaining portions of the site. The site access, pedestrian access, and parking is not sufficient for the proposed use. The area of the property proposed for the tent was formerly used as landscaping, for the landscaping business, and is unimproved. The deteriorated condition of this unimproved portion of the site is not appropriate for use by pedestrians and vehicles due to uneven terrain and varied ground conditions. Staff believes the site condition is not appropriate for this proposed temporary use and therefore recommends denial of the requested revised PCD zoning.
Thank you for that reading. Is the applicant present? Already standing there? Great.
Yes.
Well, would you like to speak or would you like to defer? We do have one card, and if there's anybody online who would like to speak in opposition or in favor, can you please raise your hand now? Nobody online, so applicant, would you like to speak or would you like to defer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Steve Giles. I'm the agent for the owner of the property, Timothy King, who's standing here. And we have read staff's report. I always like to try to work with staff to the maximum extent that I can. We disagree with their assessment of a couple of things in the report. But Mr. King has provided some answers to some questions that I think he would have had. And we, I handed that out prior to the meeting. I hope everybody got a quite, a copy of that. But, excuse me, I'm a little hoarse today. But I'm gonna defer to Mr. King to explain the project about having a seasonal fireworks stand for a few weeks, three weeks, I guess. And it's his property. He owns this property and he owns the property around it. So he's in the best position to really explain the topography, which I think is what staff's problem was, the condition of the property.
Please, if you'd like to speak, applicant?
Thank you for hearing me today. Thank you to the commissioners. My name is Timothy King. I'm the sole owner, my wife and I, of King Mills Estates. It's been a family-run business for many, many years. We bought the property back in the early 1980s. We used to run also the One Stop, King's One Stop, for 32 years that was sitting there. I sold that nine years ago and found out later that, a short time later, that I had cancer. I own over five acres right there. When I sold the One Stop, all I sold was the building and the parking lot of the One Stop. And I still own the property. On the east side of the One Stop wraps all the way around behind. And then also this property, we're looking at putting a fireworks tent on. For years, I had the property where we're talking about leased to a couple landscapers. When I found out I had cancer and also my mother had severe dementia, if you've ever been through that, it was a full-time job for my father, my, my wife and I. And then I found out I had cancer. I really lost track of a lot of things and the landscapers really did me wrong. They hauled in a lot of stuff. They didn't clean up like they should have. I've been in the process of cleaning that up for, for about a year. I've hauled off four of the big, large dumpsters of just the plastic, you know, at the, you know, when you buy a plant at Home Depot and it's got the plastic bottom? I probably had, I don't know how many of, how much of that. But that's what I've hauled, I've hauled that off and packed in the four large dumpsters, and that's all removed. Someone also came along and blessed me with about 50 tires or so. Just came in and dumped them on me at, at some point at night, being right there on Highway 10. Nothing I could do to stop someone from coming in and just helping me out with about 50 tires. The Arkansas State Highway Department has picked those up and removed those as well. I've cleaned up the backside of the property. On, at first, all that's cleaned up, picked up. There's no hazard to pedestrians or people. And I left the fence up on the front side on purpose to keep people from having access to the whole five acres, dumping more stuff or so. In the next week or so, I'm gonna take that fence down. I own heavy equipment. I'm gonna pick up all those rocks that's right there along that front. That's all going away. And I'm gonna get Harper Construction to bring in six or eight loads of gravel for me. And we're gonna gravel and top dress the, the area. Since I own the whole place, since I own all that, positioning the fireworks tent in a safe and orderly manner is no problem. There's no competition. I don't have any lease to anybody else at this time. We want to make sure, since I own the property, I'm very well aware I don't want anybody getting hurt on the property. So we're gonna make sure that it's all done correct. And when the tent goes in, it's all in a safe and orderly manner. I've talked to my neighbors. I don't have any opposition with my neighbors. The Highway 10 One Stop that is there operating now, he's in favor. It's gonna be added business and revenue and traffic. And also the ice, the ice machine guy right there, he's in favor. I have no opposition to any of that. There's 35-foot width in front of my office right there, width of ingress, egress. And over on the east side, over on the other side, it's 30-foot width. It's a, it's a straight, straightaway. There's no trees or anything visually, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. It's, there's no visual barriers. So it's a safe ingress and egress, as you see that horseshoe going around, 30-foot on one side, 35 width on the other side. Drivers can easily see both directions. And there's also plenty of parking, depending on where we position that tent, you know, maybe back 10 feet or whatever, whatever they, we do, and it, it's, it's a safe and orderly thing. There is not, it's not, I wouldn't call it level. I'd call it a slight slope. But if you walk around out there, even currently, presently now, you don't realize that you're on a slope. There's already gravel there and it's, it doesn't feel bad. It's not a, it's not an angle more so than what is unsafe. Plenty of room for parking and I, I would appreciate, and again, I'm gonna clean that up in next week, two weeks. All those final things on the front, all that on the back is cleaned up. Everything on the front is fixing to go away with my heavy equipment and everything I've had planned. And I would ask for you to approve.
One second. May we get the time, please? How much?
13.
Okay, so y'all have a few moments. I think that Mr. Overton had a comment?
I do, because when we submit letters on the day the application is being presented, it, it, it causes a great deal of issues for the city. One of the questions that I have for Director Collins, and I spoke to Monty about it, the staff really hasn't had an opportunity to review this letter. And so their recommendations don't include these conditions. And so when they review these conditions, their, 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 their recommendation may change. Also, the commissioners really haven't had an opportunity to review these either. So Director Collins, I have a question for you. Do these changes substantially change the application? That they're putting in this letter? On some of those, it could. It could definitely change recommendation. And as we have talked about in the past, you know, presenting conditions or remediations at the hearing does not give staff or the commissioners opportunity and time to read them, understand them. And so therefore, we cannot, staff cannot either change the recommendation at this point in time or comment on the stuff that was presented. You know, typically in that scenario, I would be asked by Mr. Overton what we would say. And I would say if the applicant wants these considered, I would recommend that this item be deferred by the planning commission to consider at the next hearing, to give staff time to go out and look at these that was presented to provide a revised recommendation according to what was presented. And Chairman Vogel, based upon that, my recommendation would be that we ask that the item be deferred. If the commission does want to hear it, I think we need to make the clear, the record abundantly clear that these conditions become a part of the application, that the applicant understands that everything in this letter, he is responsible for.
I'm fully aware of that.
And so you know that the, the staff has recommended denial of this project? And after they review these conditions, they may change their recommendation. Would you like to defer to the next planning commission? To give them time?
Well, the purpose, going through this rezoning thing with the, with the person that doing, who's in the audience here, that has the fireworks company that's gonna set up, he's been trying to do this before 4th of July. And knowing that this is a legislative decision of the city board, it's still gotta go to the city board as well after a planning commission meeting, so. You know, if it's between deferring and denying, I guess, I guess I would say we would have to defer it. But we...
Well, I want to make the record clear. I'm not saying it will be denied. I'm saying that the staff is recommending denial, but your conditions that you're offering today may change staff's recommendation.
Yes. And I would say that Tim would probably move to incorporate these conditions into the application.
Then move forward with the vote today?
Hold on one second. Mr. Moore?
Just for the record, if you defer, it'll be deferred to the June 9th Planning Commission agenda and will not go to the board of directors till the middle of July.
Okay. Well, we can't do that anymore. Yeah, this is, anyway, yeah, you, I'll go ahead and say it.
I, I guess I'm the fireworks guy, so that, my name's Kevin Bailey. I guess the, the thing of us, you know, I, I respect the, the process. But I think the thing that needs to be considered is, is that Tim is already in the process of correcting the matter that was brought forth to him by the, by the planning department. It's, it's getting, they're saying there was an issue and he's clearing it up right now.
Understood. And so we're gonna move forward with the application and the applicant understands that these conditions were introduced by him. It becomes a part of the application. They are responsible for everything that is written here. And it will become a part of the application file and be submitted to the board.
I will make it happen.
Thank you.
Nothing like the last minute.
Is there a way to, is there a way to make the handout visible to the virtual participants?
And that was one of the issues that I was talking about is since we are also virtual, the commissioners online do not have the ability to see this. We do not accept people giving it to our computer system and uploading at this time because it just may shut down our machine. I think to address that, it would be good to get it on record. If one of your staff members would read the conditions so that the commissioners there... We can read them in, but we will not be able to send it to them at this time. We can read them in for the record.
This is Commissioner, well, this Commissioner Thomas, although it's proposed to read those in at the last minute, how can we give that proper consideration in conjunction with the application when not having a considerable amount of time to review it?
And I, I do understand that, Commissioner. And that's why, you know, the recommendation that I put out and, but that is just a recommendation. So that would be up to the commission to do so, or the applicant at their own request to defer. And I do understand their timing. But please keep in mind that, that timing does not necessarily have to align with the city's timing or procedures.
Correct, yeah.
Mr. Giles, would you please read the conditions that the applicant is agreeing to so that the commissioners can understand?
Yes. Why don't we have, you wanna read them?
I can read them.
Yeah. Let's have the owner of the property read them.
I would request that the owner of the property read the conditions, not so much the historical background.
And is the reading of this...
One second.
This is Commissioner Thomas.
Yes, Commissioner Thomas, yes.
Is the reading of this gonna be slated against their allowed time present?
I don't think so.
It's up to the chair.
I mean, I think if we're allowing them as a commission to add conditions to their planned commercial development, then obviously they need time to read those conditions into the record. I think we still have a vote and I think...
And I believe we still also have...
Some questions to ask.
Opposition prior to a bunch of questions by the commissioners.
Sir?
Don't we still have opposition here that wants to speak?
Not to my knowledge.
Oh, we had one applicant here.
We had a support in favor of, and it was Mr. King.
I'll send you the card, my...
So I think he's already spoken. I think he's about to read, and I think to Mr., you know, Hart's point, you know, a lot of the first and only paragraph in here is about, you know, let me just read it. That way everybody can understand it. So this is from King Mills Estate, Timothy King, a manager. The address, 23924 Highway 10, Little Rock, 72223. Today, today, May 12th, 2022. To commissioners of the Little Rock City Planning Commission. Get the feedback maybe a little? Can you cut the feedback? We have feedback, but I, okay, good, thank you. Having a parent with extreme dementia and health problems for 10 years, plus finding out that I myself had cancer in 2014, I was unable to keep up with lots of things for a while. The landscapers that were renting the property started leaving trash on the property and hauling in old dirt with construction debris from job sites, things like chunks of concrete from sidewalks, et cetera. When I realized what was happening, I repeatedly demanded that they clean up the property, which they promised to do, but never did. Eventually, they stopped paying rent and I locked the gates and officially terminated their lease. I have been cleaning up the property since last summer of 2021. The grass was head high. An old truck was abandoned on the property. Lots of trash has been hauled off by Republic Services dumpsters, four large dumpsters that all were overweight, which has cost me more than twice as expected. Any other trees, shrubs, et cetera, has been moved to the far east end of the acreage to burn at a future date when safe. The property no longer poses a threat or unsafe condition. Ground has been scraped. Some gravel has been put in place and more to come before the firework tent arrives. Bullet point... Bullet point, entrance width 35 feet in front of office 23924, entrance width 30 feet besides the Highway 10 One Stop. Ingress and egress is located on a Highway 10 sides, Highway 10 straightaway, both entrances are 30 feet wide or more. Drivers can easily see both directions when entering or exiting the location. About 50 tires were dumped on the property frontage and road ditches nearby. I collected those tires, and the tires have been disposed of by the, by Arkansas State Highway Department. They are gone. The trash was dumped by previous tenant Cox Landscaping. Four of the largest roll-off dumpsters have been hauled away since last fall. Lots of metal has been hauled away, old tractor parts, trailer parts, old truck, et cetera, all gone. Front fence will be removed as soon as possible. I have left in place for security for the moment. My plans have been that it will be removed before the end of May to make way for the firework tent, fireworks tent. I wanted to leave it for security for the time being to stop the night scavengers and any future dumping. Plans to have loads of gravel hauled into top dress the lot where the fireworks tent will be and parking will be. There are still some rocks that will be moved to the back of the property before the fireworks tent arrives. Some trash trees slash shrubs will be removed. They were left in place for security to stop trucks from trespassing. I am very concerned about safety and security, not interested in anyone getting injured. I'm asking the LR City Planning to approve the fireworks certification to my zoning. This lease revenue will help me pay my expenses plus produce tax revenue for the city. State, Timothy King, dated May 12th, 2002. So I think that's been read into the record. I have a few questions for the applicant next. First question, you mentioned that you had sold, I'm sorry, I'm pulling up my map that the city provided me, you said you had sold the King's One Stop, correct?
Yes.
I looked on Pegasus and it looked like it sold twice since you sold it.
Three times.
Yeah, and however, on the map, can you show that map, Mr. Malone? If I am not mistaken, in the shaded red area, if you could zoom in further, as close as you can to that thing, red area, I'm looking on the map, and I'm looking at the Google Earth and the Pegasus. It seems to be that part of this dimension has been sold by the applicant, is that correct? Can you tell from this map that that structure in the middle there, that right below the PCD looks like King's One Stop?
Right above H-I-G-H is the One Stop.
And you do not own that property any further, any longer?
No, I do not.
Okay.
I weigh 10, One Stop owns it now.
Right, okay, so I'm a little confused here about the area, if this is not a good representation of the property we are discussing here. Is this, because looking at the.
Property I sold is basically that building, that shaded area above H-I-G-H, I did not sell, but like, I think three quarters of an acre right there.
Yeah, I see it on Pegasus right here.
As little as I could sell, I still own all that around it.
But are we asking on this application to rezone property that he is not the owner I mean, it's representational, I'm not saying that this is, you know, anything more than a graphic on a map, but I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, doing something that would impact a owner that he has sold the property next door to.
I, I did talk with the Highway 10 One Stop owner, and he's in full favor of this.
Yes, you mentioned.
I do understand your question.
Yeah, I would imagine anybody would traffic flow coming by their convenience store.
I apologize, what was the answer to Mr. Chairman's question?
They're looking it up, they're looking.
Oh, he's, okay, they're looking, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's all right, no worries.
Mr. Chair, the survey submitted for this is 2.75 acres, and it does, it's a little confusing, but it does appear to not include.
Good, okay, I just want to make sure the representation on the, the screen wasn't the actual.
That's correct, it's only for the 2.75 acres, and so it's just a, an error in the map.
That's all right, no worries, it's just a graphic, I mean, obviously there's legal descriptions for that reason. So do any other commissioners have a question for the applicant at this time?
I have a question. Um, I was under the impression that the fireworks company was gonna be operating during a certain time, would the approval allow them to operate just at that time, or would they be allowed to operate like for, I guess, New Years, or, you know, next year at a different time? Just wanted to put some craggy on that.
Applet, do you have the answer to will the fireworks stand be operating outside of this?
I think Mr. Bailey should answer there.
Hi, we did this, oh gosh, what, four or five years ago, and we were given, we were before Planning Commission, such as yourselves, and then the board, and got approval, and was, we were given five years, but the state of Arkansas only allows fireworks sales two times for the 4th of July and Christmas, New Years. We don't sell in this market during the Christmas, New Year season, so it would be only the 4th of July.
Your business would only be 4th of July, but in theory, the applicant could lease the property during that period of time that the state allows, correct? I mean, are you getting exclusive rights to the entire year?
No, just during a 30-day period.
I think to Commissioner McDonald's point, you know, in theory, the applicant could have a second fireworks company come in and sell during the second opportunity the state allows fireworks to be sold.
Well, we, we have the property leased for the, the fireworks, the July 4 season and the Christmas, New Year season, but we won't operate.
You won't?
Correct.
All right, so, okay, just trying to understand. I think Commissioner Latour has a question.
It's basically the same question, but how, once we make this change, how long does it last? Is it forever and somebody else comes in and has a different use, they go through this again, or is this, per the, per the request, is this something that ends on July 5th?
I would think that if there's another use, and that, you know, it would have to be, come through this process.
Well, I'd rather hear it from staff.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Moore.
At, at this point, unless I'm missing something, the applicant is only requesting fireworks sales from June, from June 24th through July 5th of this year. That's all that's been presented to us. If the applicant is thinking otherwise, they need to clarify that.
And, and if I may step in, there is no yearly time limit set on this condition, so if approved here and presented to the board, it is continual for those dates, no sunset.
I've been through this process one other time on Graham Smith's property, and, and it's, the Planning Commission and Board did it, gave us a five, we wouldn't have to come back for five years.
But that's not in the application, correct?
Correct.
Was it in the last application?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other questions by the commission?
Mr. Chairman Vogel?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it in his current application? Michael Vickers, and I just had a question more for the staff in this regards, I know we had some recently input data that was kind of just given, and we were not privy to, to synthesize that information. You know, based upon if approved from the staff, how do we determine or how do we monitor that these upgrades will be adhered to during the timeframe that's needed before the requested time?
Director Collins?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Vickers, that makes sense. Since this is a rezoning PCD, the actual requirement to do that would not go into effect until approved at the board level, and we would go out and look at some of the things that are stated on here to verify during that process, and could provide a amended recommendation prior to the board, but the requirement to do so, as far as like, like one item in there where it says the front fence will be removed, we would not be able to enforce that until acted upon at the board as an ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that information. So I just want to be clear, if we make an amendment, they provide the upgrades by or before, well, before the meeting, the board meeting of the city, then they can move forward, is that correct?
I don't think they can move forward until they are approved by the city, is that correct?
That, that's, I think that's correct, Commissioner Vickers.
That's what I'm saying, as long as they get all the, as long as they get all the upgrades and approved before the board meeting, and the, the board, the city board approves it, and then they can move forward, right? As long as they get all the upgrades.
They cannot do anything that would be the use they are proposing, but any entity, property owner can clean up the property, that is a right to do so on the property, they just cannot do anything that would be associated with the proposed use.
Thank you.
Commissioner Latour had another follow-up from his previous question. Okay, any other questions, comments to the applicant?
Chairman Vogel?
Yes, sir, Mr. Moore.
I, I'm a little bit confused because there were two things, Jamie said that this thing does not have a sunset, and then the applicant said that they were only going to do it for five years. So we need to clarify the record as to, is it five years or is there a sunset? If it's going to be five years, then you would have to propose the condition, and that would have to be a part of the motion, or is it going to be for, for eternity?
It is not in the application, I think what they was talking about was what was approved on another site, a totally separate application, but the term of five years has not been proposed and put down as a condition on this application.
Thank you for clarifying.
We would amend to include that, that's the state law requirement, and so we would move to amend the application for five years.
Hope it's a state law in a midpoint. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I think we have a very advanced motion about to happen.
I move that we move for the approval of item Z7870-A, including all staff comments and conditions except the recommendation of denial.
I think we should also include the.
Yes, yes, and to include the amended presentation by the owner Timothy King as attached to the documents.
Mr. Chair, you'll also, you also need to include the condition as offered by the applicant, that this is be for a five-year period.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
That's also an amendment for a five-year period. Thank you.
Second.
So for the third time in a row, we will be voting the exact same way, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Batten?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
No.
Vogel?
No.
9-1, motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Before the city board. Time is of the essence. That said, we are now on to item eight, and I will be recusing myself from this item as well.
Item number eight, file number Z9679, this is Elrod Short Term Rental, PDC located at 320 North Palm Street. The applicant proposes to rezone this 0.16 acre property located at 320 North Palm Street from R3, single-family residential to PDC Plan Development Commercial, to allow use of the property as a short-term rental. The owner will not reside in the residence, and the entire residence will be rented as one unit. Access to the property is a one-lane concrete driveway from North Palm Street, additional parking is located along North Palm Street in the alley at the rear of the property. The applicant notes that there's parking for two vehicles on the main driveway of the property. Section 36502 of the city zoning ordinance requires one parking plate, one parking space per dwelling unit. Staff believes that that parking is sufficient. Staff does not support the requested PDC zoning, staff does not believe the request is reasonable, and that the proposed commercial use is not appropriate for this location. The property is designated as RL, which is residential low density by the city's future land use plan, and is bordered on all sides by single-family homes. Staff believes that the introduction of a commercial short-term rental will be out of character with the overall area at this time, and could have an adverse impact on the surrounding single-family properties. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested PDC rezoning request.
Applicant present?
Yes, hi.
We have one card for, as opposed in the item, you have the option of deferring, or you could go ahead and present if you'd like.
I will defer to the opposition at this point.
Frank Allison, you may propose to podium?
I'm Frank Allison, I'm a neighbor of Mr. Elrod, I live just three doors down. My concern is that Mr. Elrod will not be a resident of the home while it's being rented, and so we would not have.
I'm a little bit closer to the microphone, Mr. Allison.
Pardon?
I'm a little bit closer to the microphone.
Sure. My concern is that we would not have an adequate way to address problems if they occurred, and also the, the lack of parking, there's, parking on the street is rather tight, so that's really all I had, thank you.
Are there any polls online? Okay, there being none, applicant?
Hi, I had a PowerPoint, I don't know if that could be pulled up, but it shows, okay, uh, okay, there it is, if you could start it. So I am applying to Airbnb my home, and I've actually talked with Mr. Allison about this a couple days ago, and if you could go to the next, I'll give you, I'll start off with an overview of the property and just kind of my plant, my game plan. There's, it's a three-bedroom house, I use the fifth, or the third bedroom as an office, it's a one and a half bathroom. or the third bedroom as an office. It's a one and a half bathroom. I'm gonna probably have no more than four guests at the home at one time. There's a list of all the rooms right there. There's plenty of parking at the, at the property. There's on-street parking and then there's two spaces in my driveway. And with the subtraction of my car that is already there, there really will not be a net addition of parking anywhere on this property. I'll be able to screen the applicants and figure out, you know, who, who can live there or rent my property from me. There's a large deck in the back with plants and there's a washer and dryer and all that good stuff. And I have a ring doorbell on the property. So while I will not be at the property, there will be a constant video feed to my cellphone, which will give me access to all, you know, everything that goes on at the property. I'll get, if you go to the next slide, please. So this is my property. You can see it down there at 320 North Palm. It's close to up there around Cavanaugh, all the Kroger and the restaurants and all that stuff. And then the second picture there, all the yellow stars are the rentals that are already on my street. Two of those stars are actually owned by Mr. Allison. And there's, the star across the street is a property with med school students. The star to the left of that is a med school resident. And the star to the left of that is a rental and he's trying to get a tenant right now. The orange star is, which is right by my property, is someone who has already applied for the Airbnb rental term. And they're operating their Airbnb. They still live at the property. They have parking in the back and there's, they've never had more than two people there, which is definitely my goal. The yellow star down the road, down on the south part is another rental. Then the two above that orange star are the ones that Mr. Allison owns. And then the two stars on the, I guess, the left side of the picture, those are the, those are two rentals as well that I believe have a special zoning. And there might be more rentals. That's just all the ones I know about. If you could go to the next slide, please. So here are all the Airbnb listings in the neighborhood. There's kind of the nightly rate, monthly rate. I'll get into kind of what timeframe I'm targeting for the Airbnb. So I think it fits with the character of the neighborhood to, you know, it's a unique neighborhood that has walkability to restaurants and shops with, I don't, you know, there's not that many places around Little Rock that have that. So people take advantage of the walkability and also the, the main draw to the area, the medical facilities. If you could go to the, well, I'll, I'll get into the medical facilities. But as far as neighborhood opposition, if you go to the next page, I have a letter from my neighbors who are directly to the right. They, I explained to them that there's going to be no more than one vehicle, most likely at the property and replace a mine. There's going to be a strict kind of, uh, let, approval process by me, you know, giving, and giving preference to the medical folks, professionals who come in town. The longer they want to rent, the better, which of course would keep, keep everything kind of in line with how the neighborhood and the other rentals are operated. So I just want to have some flexibility. As far as that goes, they believe, we had a talk, I believe the note says after, after reviewing their rental property, they, they're in support and, and they, we, we, I'm pretty close with them. They have my cellphone numbers and we speak all the time and get each other's mail when we're out of town and all that stuff. So they didn't have any problem. The guy who had the rental with the orange star on the last page, he sent me a text last night. He was busy with work, but he's in support as well. So he offered his support and I just vocally tell that. So if you go to the next slide, please. So in conclusion, the map on here is the large medical facilities we have in our, in Little Rock. It's, you know, some of the best in the state. It attracts a wide range of people, imports dollars to the community. And it's really a unique area in that regard. And, you know, the, if, the main concern of traffic, I believe, is really not an issue since, you know, no more than four people, preferably two, ideally one, staying at the property, you know, no, you know, the house is not really designed for any kind of party or anything. It's a 1,300 square foot house. You know, it's meant to sleep and work and go up to the Cavanaugh and have dinner. So it's really just meant for people to come in town and to use these, this medical stuff that we have so, in our, in our community. So, and the property man, I will not live at the property, but I will come to the property a lot. And I want the flexibility of the Airbnb platform so I can continue to live in my property when I come to Little Rock. That's a big deal. If I got a long-term tenant, I would not be able to use the property. And, but this, this allows me to have a lot of flexibility so I can come into town, use my property, talk to all my neighbors, see what they, see, you know, address any concerns. I will already have, you know, video, you know, monitoring. I have my father who's right down the road, got a new, and he's, he's, he's a, we sell commercial real estate and he is very, he's experienced property management. So as far as, you know, mowing the grass and physically putting eyes on the property, there will definitely be a person there to do that, along with my neighbors who I explain I'm in constant contact with. The, I have a cleaning company engaged that I've explained the flexibility and they, and they, you know, we're nego, we negotiated, you know, compensation that they can come and clean up after the guests and you can make it to where the guests, you know, clean up after themselves in most cases. And, you know, the guests that I will have will be in, ideally in the medical field and professional folks, you know, coming in town to do work. And then I stayed, I'll use the property when I'm in town, the flexibility, good relationship with my neighbors. And, you know, I think, I think the only opposition I've heard is as far as traffic, which I don't think is a, really a big deal because the subtraction of my car plus addition of another car will be a net, not change. You know, there's a lot more traffic from other rentals in the property and the, in the immediate vicinity that I think have a lot more traffic than I do, quite frankly. So there, my, I will not be an addition to the traffic in the area. I would, I would try to tell everybody and my neighbors and everything. So, and I've talked with, talked to a lot of neighbors, sent out the letters, knocked on the doors, see, see who's in, see who's in support after I explain, you know, it's really just a, it's really just a continuation of more that's going on in the neighborhood. I think everyone pretty much supports it. I, I, I've talked, I've talked to a lot of people and I haven't heard any opposition. So I would just, I would just ask that y'all would approve it. So that, and obviously I would want to have more preference on the long-term individual. I think that's definitely the goal, to have, rent this out monthly. You know, 29-day rentals, book them back-to-back. I think that would be definitely the ideal situation for me to, you know, lower cost of cleaning it and different stuff like, and, you know, management side. So I'm definitely looking for an ease in that regard to have, to have more of a long-term component associated with it. So, but just want to have the flexibility and go through the proper channels to establish that. So.
Ferman has any questions?
Thank you. And any commissioner have any questions? Ask the applicant?
I have questions for the staff. Two questions. Do the zoning change to short-term? And is notices sent out to residents who are within 200 feet of the ordinance change on a short-term?
Yes, this application requires that the applicant send a notice, a notice in the mail certified to all owners of property within 200 feet.
Second question. If this is approved, this agenda item is approved, how will it affect the new zoning, short-term ordinance that we are going to discuss later? Will they be grandfathered in if, if it's voted on and approved right now? Would, is it grandfathered in, that he don't have to then comply to the new ordinance on short-term? Or will that, he also have to go with the new ordinance on the short-term?
Right now, all of the short-term rentals that were, have been approved at the planning commissioning board are planned developments and it approves the use. The short-term rental ordinance that is going to be proposed to the board, hopefully in July timeframe, and we get to this process of hearing it, is really setting two types of short-term rentals and the process for a public hearing for those. Once they are, if they are approved, there is a enforcement portion of that ordinance that we would inspect yearly. And that would be for any short-term rental, whether it is approved after or approved before. It would encompass them all because it is not negating their zoning or their use. It is just getting them to comply with a business license and then also with a commercial inspection that is needed since the, the use of a short-term rental is considered, considered transient in nature. I, by municipalities and the state collects also hotel motel tax for that purpose. So they would not, they would be grandfathered in as far as the use goes because it's a planned development that's approved. It would not be any different now than if it gets adopted later, the ordinance, because since they are not living at the residence, they would come through a planned development process. So and we, if the ordinance is enacted on short-term rentals, then really what would be imposed upon them is just licensing, business license for that, a yearly fee, and then also inspection once a year to ensure that they are compliant with aspects of that ordinance.
Thank you.
I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
I was going to ask the applicant. So I understand that owners were informed that lived in a certain radius to the property, but were the, I know, I know you explained that there were a lot of tenants on the street. Were the tenants aware of this as well or were just, were the owners of the home?
Well, there's, there's been a big sign in front of my, on my porch. And I did send letters to the owners. I do communicate with the tenants, but, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're, have been med school and have different doctors, they're doctors and residents. And they, I believe they knew about it. And I, so, I, but I did send letters to the actual property owners.
I've got a question for, I guess, staff. On, in his presentation, all those Airbnbs that had stars, did they go through a process like this? Or, or is it just folks that are doing it and we're not on to them yet?
Those aren't Airbnbs, the stars.
The, I believe the stars represented on Mr. Elrod's map, the yellow stars, I believe those are long-term rentals. I don't believe those are Airbnbs or short-term rentals. The orange star is 400 North Palm Street. Their property is zoned R3, single-family, and this commission approved a, an owner-occupied bed and breakfast, bed and breakfast as a special use permit three or four months ago.
Are there any other questions? Any commissioner?
Not, we entertain a motion. I can't make it because I'm sitting for chairman.
I, I can make a motion that we approve item nine, Z 9680, I'm sorry. We approve item eight, Z 9679, on the agenda, subject to all staff comments, with the exception of their recommendation for denial.
Second?
Just Commissioner Thomas, a second.
Commissioner Thomas?
I think, yeah, Commissioner Thomas, our second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Bedden?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Hart?
No.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
And Vogel, who cares?
Vogel, accuse.
Seven, two, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, applicant. We appreciate your time. Well, we will go on to the reading of item nine.
Item nine, file number Z 9680. This is the Wallace Auto Services, PDC located 11415 West Markham Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone this 0.34 acre property located 11415 West Markham Street from C3 Commercial to PDC Plan Development Commercial to allow for development of a vehicle service slash modification business with outdoor display. The property currently contains a former branch bank facility with a drive-thru and paid parking areas. The bank teller areas have been converted into office space with the former drive-thru canopy areas having been enclosed for vehicle workshop areas. Staff is not supportive of the requested PDC, although there are other auto-related uses in this immediate area. Staff feels that the site is too small for the proposed use. The applicant's proposed outdoor vehicle display and parking of a large business trailer will occupy all of the parking area between the existing building and West Markham Street. This leaves very little area for employee and customer parking and area for vehicles awaiting service or pickup by the customer. Additionally, the applicant has begun and continued construction on the bill, on the existing building without obtaining a building permit. Staff believes this small commercial lot is not appropriate for the proposed use and therefore recommends denial of the requested PDC rezoning.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant present or online? If the applicant is not present, or if the applicant is online, please raise your hand now. If not, we will proceed to a vote.
Staff would recommend deferral of the application to the June 9th agenda.
No vote needed. Application deferred.
You do need to vote on that. You do need to vote to defer.
All right, then I guess we'll need a motion to vote on deferral.
Move that we defer item Z 9680 to the June 9th meeting.
Second.
A second.
We have a roll call vote.
Bedden?
Yes.
Brooks?
Hart? Yes.
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, for the record, that deferral will be at the cost of the applicant.
Correct. Okay, so we have item 13, a land use plan amendment. We hear the reading and we have a couple of folks in opposition.
with the parking lots, a daycare center. The, and across Maywood to the west is Wright's Welding, which has been in place since before annexation. So, it's a legally non-conforming use, which is owned, single-family. The most recent development is off the map, which is the Banco ZK corporate headquarters building, which ultimately will be a multi-building campus, and then I've gone over the other newer developments in the area. This is currently two residential structures, excuse me, on what has historically been two residential lots, on Cantrell Road and Maywood Road, Maywood Drive. Yeah, there is available office to the north and to the east and west that is not developed. There's also available residential, has really been, other than Banco ZK, there's, there really hasn't been any office development in the, in this area, immediate area. There has been some commercial development, as I've mentioned before, and plus there's a few other things that are mentioned in the staff report, multifamily developments that are both to the east and west of this, that have been developed more recently. So, there is at least indication of some demand for residential. There's questionable whether or not there's demand for office, and there's plenty of supply for office. So, staff cannot recommend approval of this change at this time. We feel like it should continue to be residential, at least for the time, foreseeable future.
Thank you for that reading. We have two people who wanted to speak about this. Carolyn Dodds.
I'm Carolyn Dodds, and I live at 41 Maywood Drive. My husband and I have lived there for 47 and a half years. I'm here to speak against this with some of my neighbors and some who couldn't be with us because they had to work. I have passed out a list that was put together of our concerns and valid reasons to not pass this request, and after realizing that you have virtual, I would like to read this list so that everyone understands a majority of our concerns.
Feel free, just keep in mind we have a time constraint of 20 minutes.
It's not going to take long. Our property values, number one, our property values would decrease significantly if this land use change happens. I can't imagine telling a prospective buyer, "You will turn on left on Maywood between the Red Barn and the Strip offices on the left." Number two, the traffic is on Maywood Drive is in the middle, Maywood Drive is in the middle of seven schools, from Joe T. Robinson's Three Schools just west to back east to the Pinnacle View Middle School on Ranch Drive. Morning and afternoon traffic is unbelievable. You often plan your outings around school times. Number three is one of the most serious, the dangerous turn lane area. The turn lane in this area has turned into a dangerous obstacle. Great concern if another entrance and exit would be added between Maywood Drive and Norton Road to the east or across from Valley Ranch Drive. There is minimal driving distance between Maywood, Valley Ranch, and Norton Road to access the turn lane when going left or right, with cars coming at you from opposite directions into the turn lane. This does not even consider the short distance to Pinnacle Liquor Store, Casa Manana Restaurant, and Milano's Restaurant turn lane area. There should be a traffic study of this area. Number four, we have counted the small-business-type offices now available between Maywood, going back east about 2.4 miles. The count was on the obvious fronts, and there's 22-plus. That would seem to be sufficient for this particular area. It does not include those we couldn't see. The fifth one is residential, safe, and private area. Maywood is a dead-end street and has 20 homes. Didi Circle is a side street. We have young children and grandchildren who ride bikes and play outside a lot. If a large vehicle turns onto Maywood by mistake or to do business at the welding shop, it has to go to Didi Circle to turn around. The same would happen if a vehicle missed the turn into the entrance of a new area. Number six, there would be a loud, early-morning noise from garbage pickup of large containers that would be used. We can hear the early morning garbage pickup down at Walmart. Can you imagine if it were next door? Walmart is about one-quarter mile west from Maywood. Number seven, if this land use request is approved, it will escalate the Wright property to the west of Wright Welding Shop, owned by Connie Wright, to apply for the same use designation or possible commercial zoning. This property was approved by the Little Rock Planning and Development Commission as a single-family, legally non-conforming use property some years ago. At that time, the Maywood neighborhood had no prior knowledge of this land use change request, and it was a done deal before we could effectively counter and voice our displeasure. So, our Maywood neighborhood has been identified with a Red Barn with multiple phone signs and a large Wright Welding sign for years. Number eight, Maywood was brought into the city August of 2007. We did get fire hydrants, but we still don't have city sewer or city lights, city street lights. Why should we have to lose the value of our property in order to build more on Highway 10, Cantrell? Back quite a few years ago, remembering, and I do remember, the original Highway 10 overlay, it was the desire then to keep some of the beauty of Highway 10, homes and green space. In closing, I hope that you will give some real thought to this and not pass this request, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. I think a little procedural issue was made an error by me. I forgot to ask the requestor if they wanted to defer their time to the opposition, so I apologize for that point of order.
I defer.
Thank you, sir. Carol Bullock, I believe, is the only other person in the room who's in opposition.
Hello. I am a member of the Maywood neighborhood, and I just wanted to appeal to y'all to decline this zoning. We have a quiet neighborhood. We want it kept that way, and I appreciate your concerns. I appreciate you serving our community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone online who would also like to speak in opposition to item 13? If so, please raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you. No one is raising their hands, so I presume it's the requestors' chance to speak now.
I had a slide presentation. I don't know who initiates that. Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and my name is Brian Winstead. I'm a commercial real estate broker in Little Rock. I work for I Realty Arkansas Commercial. I'm the agent for both of these owners. I don't own these properties. I'm the agents for the properties. The first thing I wanted to say is there was an error in the staff report. It shows that the properties are 2.75 acres, and they're actually 1.54 acres. One Maywood is 1.04, 18515 Cantrell is a half an acre. Both of these properties are on Highway 10, they face Highway 10. They're contiguous to each other, and they're being marketed and sold as one property. As you can see, most of the land around Highway 10, that fronts Highway 10, is commercial in nature. The beige is the residential, and the multicolored are mostly commercial uses. We're asking for a suburban office change to the land use map. We're not rezoning anything. We're just wanting a change to the land use map to suburban office, which is quiet office, like a dentist's office, a doctor's office, attorney, insurance-type offices, more nine-to-five offices that should be conducive to this area. They shouldn't be driving down into the neighborhood for any reason. It should be an added feature to the area versus a welding shop. Everyone that bought back there bought with a welding shop at the corner, so I would not think a new office building, well-maintained, would be a problem. The current zoning of RL, my understanding, according to the staff's report, is a more dense use. It allows six units per acre. If we were to use that use, we could put nine units on this acre and a half instead of one office building, and that's our intent, is to have it for office use. And then the next slide, please. This, one of the staff's comments in the report was that the suburban office use is not appropriate at this time. The owners have lived there for 39 years in Maywood, and they do believe it's time. As you can see, the land across the street, this is directly across the street from Maywood, was, the land use map was amended from residential to suburban back in 1998. If the time was good in 1998, how can it not be good now? The traffic's significantly higher now. Okay, and then to the next slide, please. The staff report also says that both of these properties are on Highway 10, which is a state highway constructed by Arkansas Department of Transportation, is a five-lane road, is designated as a principal arterial street, and is to serve through traffic and to connect major traffic generators. To me, that means a lot of traffic, and you can see how the traffic has grown there. We're up to over 19,000 vehicles per day now, which is not conducive for residents. The next slide, please. This is a report from the Arkansas Department of Transportation, Little Rock District Six, job status map, dated 10/13/21. And next slide, please. You can see, you may need to zoom in on that, but the Arkansas Department of Transportation is spending $81 million right now at the intersection of Highway 10 and 430. And the next slide will show you that they are also planning on spending $25 million on widening Highway 10 from Pleasant Ridge Road to Taylor Loop from five lanes to seven lanes. So, all these, these two projects alone are $106 million, and they're not spending this money because they don't think we have a traffic problem or, or traffic's going to decrease. They all know that's the main corridor west, it's down Highway 10, and this is just, again, proof of it, that that traffic is going to continue, not decrease. The next slide, please. See if we can go up a little bit higher on that slide. One of the main drivers with a dense residential development is they basically have to follow public works, and in this case, we're following public sewer. And you can see here on Colonel Glenn Road, sewer stops basically right across the street from the nursing school, where those warehouses are, sewer stops there. Lawson Road, sewer stops at the Dollar General there. What that's telling us is we're not going to have any dense residential developments west of there because we don't have sewer, and you have to have sewer for a dense residential development. So, if we don't have those, we don't have commercial. So, that's why the commercial pretty much stops right at Bowman, where all the car dealerships are. There's very little commercial development west of there on Colonel Glenn or on Lawson Road. The next slide, please. This basically is showing us the same thing down Canis Road. I'm trying to show you the main roads that go west because we know that's where Little Rock is growing. That is at Chanel Downs area. So, that's as far as we have sewer. Okay, and then to the next slide, please. The staff report also says that both of these properties are on Highway 10, which is a state highway constructed by Arkansas Department of Transportation, is a five-lane road, is designated as a principal arterial street, and is to serve through traffic and to connect major traffic generators. To me, that means a lot of traffic, and you can see how the traffic has grown there. We're up to over 19,000 vehicles per day now, which is not conducive for residents. The next slide, please. This is a report from the Arkansas Department of Transportation, Little Rock District 6 Job Status Map, dated 10/13/21. And next slide, please. You can see, you may need to zoom in on that, but the Arkansas Department of Transportation is spending $81 million right now at the intersection of Highway 10 and 430. And the next slide will show you that they are also planning on spending $25 million on widening Highway 10 from Pleasant Ridge Road to Taylor Loop from five lanes to seven lanes. So all these two projects alone are $106 million, and they're not spending this money because they don't think we have a traffic problem or traffic's going to decrease. They all know that's the main corridor west, it's down Highway 10, and this is just, again, proof of it, that that traffic is going to continue, not decrease. The next slide, please. See if we can go up a little bit higher on that slide. One of the main drivers with a dense residential development is they basically have to follow public works. And in this case, we're following public sewer. And you can see here on Colonel Glenn Road, sewer stops basically right across the street from the nursing school, where those warehouses are. Sewer stops there. Lawson Road, sewer stops at the Dollar General there. What that's telling us is we're not going to have any dense residential developments west of there because we don't have sewer. And you have to have sewer for a dense residential development. So if we don't have those, we don't have commercial. So that's why the commercial pretty much stops right at Bowman, where all the car dealerships are. There's very little commercial development west of there on Colonel Glenn or on Lawson Road. The next slide, please. This basically is showing us the same thing down Canis Road. I'm trying to show you the main roads that go west because we know that's where Little Rock is growing. That is at Chenal Downs area. So that's as far as we have sewer down Canis. So again, don't have sewer, don't have dense developments, you don't have commercial. The next slide, please. This one is of Denny Road, which we've had a lot of patio home subdivisions go down Denny Road. Right now, sewer stops at Chenal Elementary. So again, we can't have residential developments, and how sewer is pulled is by developers. The city doesn't do that. A developer has to do that. That's why Chenal has been so successful in expanding to the west, is they can just tie on to their existing subdivisions and continue to pull sewer incrementally rather than a long stretch at one time. Also, on, just off of Highway 300, west on Ridge Road, there is a sewer treatment plant that is about a mile from Highway 10. And what that tells me is there is also expecting growth and increased needs for wastewater treatment in that area because of the continued growth down Highway 10. Dense residential developments follow public works. In this case, it's sewer. And then the commercial developers follow the dense residential developments. The next slide, please. That one's actually of Highway 10 from the sewer, and you can see it's just getting pulled by Chenal as we go. So one more slide. Okay, that's back to the land use map. And there was another remark that staff made, that there was plenty of non-residential, meaning commercial, uses already available with no evidence of demand, but suggests there is strong demand for residential in the area. The land use map shows, again, a lot of the beige, which is residential, and the multicolors, which are primarily commercial uses. The staff may not have evidence of demand for commercial properties, but I do. The Dairy Queen at Chenal Parkway and Highway 10 went in with a small strip center. Popeyes has gone in down there. The Jiffy Lube and Car Wash USA across from the Walmart. And on this, these two lots that we're marketing as the zone residential but potential, and that's why we're here, potential commercial use. I've had one offer that we accepted, but it was later terminated because of zoning issues. When the buyer went to the planning commission, the staff told them there would be no more zoning changes on Highway 10 west of Chenonse. So once they were told that, they terminated the contract. But there is demand there. I also got a letter of intent just this Monday from an education, some kind of computer technical education entity, has sent me a letter of intent to purchase the property. Also have a medical user that is interested in the property. So the interest is there, the demand is there. Other homeowners in this area, to the west, across Maywood, where the welding shop currently is, that property is currently for sale. The property owner to the east of our property that we have for sale called me, not to complain, but called me to ask me if I would let them know if we had a buyer that needed more land because they would be interested in selling their land as well. The property to east of their property is already on the market. All these properties are on the market because they're no longer conducive for residential use. You know, who wants 20,000 cars a day going in front of their house with kids, with animals? You know, it's just not a safe place to be anymore. The next slide, please. The staff also commented that there was a lot of office land zoned in the area, and why do we need more? So I did a search on one of our websites, it's a commercial website called Catalyst, and I did a search from Chenal Parkway to the 430 interchange, looking for raw land that faced Highway 10 that had some kind of commercial possibility. And I found six properties. And out of those six properties, one of them is already zoned to PDC for a car wash, two are zoned residential, which ours is one of those. One is owned C3 on the corner of Chenonse, and it's priced too high for office use. It's at $22 a square foot. So that only leaves two properties, two pieces of land between Chenal Parkway and 430 that are available for a commercial use. That's not an abundance of properties. And as you know, it doesn't matter if the property is zoned commercial. It matters if it's available for sale. And so, you know, the issue of there's a lot out there, it doesn't matter if there's a lot out there if none of them are for sale. And that's what we're looking at here. We've got two that would fit a commercial use that are currently on the market. The next slide, please. The staff also included a statement that there are other areas in Little Rock where single-family houses exist on major roadways. And I agree with that, there are, and they all have this same list of problems that I've got up there of loud noise, they have to keep their windows shut, danger to humans and pets, dangerous access to and from the property, lack of privacy, low air quality, dust, pollen, lower resale value being on a busy street, up to 20%. The neighbors in the neighborhood don't have to worry about these issues. They're insulated. But these homeowners are not insulated from these issues. They're on the front lines. The next slide, please. This is an old Google Earth image. I could only get it to go back to 1994, and the residents of Maywood have been there since 1983, so 11 years. You can see how much things have changed since they've been in the property. The highway at the time was a two-lane road out of the city limits, very little traffic. Neither one of these properties are in a neighborhood. They're not designated a neighborhood, they're not planted in a neighborhood or a subdivision. They're just houses on Highway 10. They're not part of the Maywood subdivision, if you look on the property cards. The highest and best use of these properties is no longer residential but commercial. Suburban office is not an intensive development and should not be a detriment to anyone. I've tried to present facts here and not my opinions. That's why I've had so many slides, is to show where my information is coming from. We would appreciate the commission's support and approval of this amendment. And I do have one more slide, and it's just a recap of the reasons why we are asking your support and think that this residential property should be changed on the land use map to suburban office. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the requestor?
I have a question. Brian, on this property, is there already buildings on the property?
Yes, there's two residents. One Maywood is owner-occupied, 18515 Cantrell is a rent house. And I'm glad you brought that up because the rent house is getting somewhat dilapidated, and the reason why is tenants are complaining of the noise. And so they're having to lower the rent to get tenants, and when a landlord has to lower the rent, they have less funds to keep up the house. And so that's how we get some of these dilapidated houses, is the landlord no longer can charge a rent that can allow him the excess funds to keep the property approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, Robbie, to me, this is an easy ask of the applicant. You know, Highway 10, we struggle with these residential uses that want to convert over to commercial, and we're actually not contemplating a change in the land use plan to commercial. The applicant has asked for suburban office, which I think is a great use for the property. So obviously, the long-term plan for Highway 10 is just, if we want to continue to grow westward, residential is just not going to be in the future for those properties that front Highway 10. So to me, guys, this is an easy one, I think, and I'm not sure why staff is holding on to that, the residential designation, but I think this is a great fit here. And honestly, I would probably be inclined to even approve a commercial use, but to me, suburban office is the best of both worlds. It is a nice, quiet buffer between the residents, who have been back on Maywood Road for a long time, and the busy Highway 10 corridor. So I'm going to be in favor of this one, guys.
Todd, I agree with you on that. With dilapidated buildings on the front street of that Highway 10 is just not a good look. And to have zoning change to office space, I think would be a great move for the future. So I'll be approving it as well.
Any other commissioners have any comments or questions for the requestor? I'd like to make a few if nobody else does. Hearing none. I think Highway 10 has come up several times since I've been on the commission. It's fun to watch each side with their opinions. Seems like the residents always are the ones that are most concerned with the development. I think that is very important to consider as we, you know, look at Highway 10. It's been going on my entire life, what's going to happen with that road? And, you know, as the requestor noted, a lot of money's being spent to try and make the road more efficient. I lived out there for more than five years of my life, and I didn't take Highway 10. I went Rodney Param to get onto the interstate because it was so busy. And at some point, I think this body has to recognize that we need a plan. We don't need a one-off every time somebody wants to make a change to come before the planning commission. I think we need a good overview of what the land use should be, and, you know, sadly, I think that the residential developments that were allowed on that property have faced the brunt of the traffic issues that are out there. And I don't know where the compromise is going to be, but, you know, I think the developers should get together and come with a plan to the staff and the commission that will help us see what the future of Highway 10 looks like. Because to continue to see application and request for one-offs and, you know, changes that sometimes we like and sometimes we don't like, you know, puts us in a very unique position, you know? So I know that we've had applications recently that because certain entities on the road didn't like what was across the street, they wanted to flex, and that's all right. They have that right to do that. But, you know, we as a commission have to make our decisions, and my ask is, you know, for the developers to come with a holistic view of what they think the area should look like, and then maybe as a commission, we can plan properly so that everybody will know in the future what's going to happen. With that said, and hearing nothing else from the commissioners, I guess it's time to make a motion.
I move for the approval of item LU2022-19-01, including all staff comments and conditions except for the recommendation of denial.
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Benton?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Thomas.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Yes.
Nonone motion.
All right, we've been going for a solid three hours and 23 minutes. Why don't we take a seven-minute break? And I have a question for Amy Huey, if you're in the audience still. So we'll come back at 7:30. Please, come back at 7:30. We've got an important issue to go over.
Thank you, guys.
We got your flask.
What we got?
Nothing but a big old damn bottle.
We still don't think a vote count.
This is grueling.
I figured we...
This is bad as February. I never dreamed it would be this bad.
Four against, one for, and then three on there, but we have way more than that in the room, so.
I'm just...
What you did was...
Is this Brian?
Because I didn't know what to do.
Jamie, what's the office?
I don't even know why I was in your office.
What's the goal?
You know, that's what planners...
That's the worst part of what planners are for, is to watch the area, information, people, everything else.
And what we're proposing.
Then we're going to ask for input.
That's what really this is, their input.
And let y'all digest this for a month, we'll come back with another one.
We'll get some more input in that meeting.
Hopefully better decisions.
Two.
More often than not.
It's not going to be a good one.
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 You know, planners... What planners are for is to watch the area, information, people, everything else. And what we're proposing. Then we're gonna ask for input. That's what really this is, their input. Digest this for a month, we'll come back with another one. We'll get some more input in that meeting.
Hopefully better decisions. Our public comment section meeting at the solve of Woodrow and Seventh by Whitewater Tavern Area Community Center is to hear from Director Collins about the ordinance. I think our goal is to hear from some of the public who has patiently waited for so long to hear about their, you know, interpretation of the ordinance that's proposed. It's been out on the website for the better part of a year, if not longer. And then I think we need to, you know, listen and input our comments as well as commissioners. And then I think we digest what we have heard. And, you know, we'll obviously have another opportunity to come back with the final ordinance before we vote on it. And then take us through the process. Director Collins?
Well, since this is an ordinance change per law, the, it has to be heard at the planning commission. And the planning commission is the public meeting for that venue to happen. We did start this process back in 2019. And so we had intended to get this process through 2020, but as everybody knows, we had a pandemic, and so everything got put on hold. So the two meetings that you referenced, talked about, we felt like it was, if we was gonna crank it back up and finish it out this year, we really needed to go back and refresh, everybody knock the dust off of it, just try to get the process started again before we brought it back to the planning commission. Because the planning commission did hear the rough draft of it back in 2020. And so I felt it was a good process to do that again, really hear it twice at the planning commission. And then upon the recommendation, whatever that recommendation is, forward it to the board for consideration. The goal is, is to try to have it in front of the board in the July timeframe. That is what I committed to do with several board members that was asking me, did we just stop this process? So that's where we're at. And so if you're ready for the presentation, I'll kind of go through it. I know we're kind of running late, and I want people to be heard. So I'm gonna try to summarize mine. I think everybody can, has either, several that I know of in the audience has seen the ordinance and gone through. So I just want to point out some things for the commission. The first thing I want to point out is the page, Walter, if you go down to the one, for short-term rental regulations in Arkansas. And for everyone either here or online, we're gonna make this also available for our presentation. So you can have that too for the whole presentation. You know, there are several cities in Arkansas that are regulating short-term rentals. And so as you can see from there, right now, what we have listed is other than us that is looking at it, Fayetteville, Hot Springs, North Little Rock, and Conway. There, every one of them is requiring a business license to do that operation. Some of them have set density limits, and I guess that would be really based upon what the commission has looked at and whatever the board recommends. We're not proposing any density limits for us. We are proposing a licensing fee, but I think that might be, that's not the annual fee. I think that's just the initial coming in. The safety standards, they have to adhere to the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code for whatever use is, and this would be considered a transient use. And you can see, they called out a little bit differently, but it is the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code for what they need. The annual actions, you know, we're proposing two different types of annual inspections, and I'll go into that a little bit later on there. And every municipality that we have on this spreadsheet does have a 24/7 owner availability with a response time to come back. Response times varies from one hour to three hours. We're, you know, at this time proposing one, but we have got comments to change that. Walter, if you go to the next slide? Currently, how we handle it, and I explained that a little bit in some of the presentation or items previously tonight, we do handle them through like a bed and breakfast type scenario, which is a special use permit. Other than that, is handled through a planned development process. Because like the special use permit or the planned development process allows us to tie it to an entity, not only the property, but also the entity. So if the property is sold, then that, that could go away. So if it's approved and the property is sold, that does not necessarily mean that the approved use carries forever on the property. It would end at... And so currently, we do have that process, but it doesn't really have some of the inspections, some of the licensing, and some of the yearly inspection process on there. So you can see, if you go to the, I don't want to leave out the comments that we've received, some of them, Walter, I'll hit a couple of these. One of them was the desire not to allow short-term rentals, concerned about the bill of assurance. One of them was the desire not to regulate short-term rentals at all. So we've seen both sides of it in support and not supportive of this. Comment was our initial draft is burdensome and punitive. You know, should have a density limit on the number of SDRs. Some said should allow RVs to be used as short-term rentals. We had responses said, you know, response time for responsible party too short. Right now, our draft is an hour. So this by no means is the full list of comments that we've received. You know, throughout that, this kind of summarizes it. We do have all those comments. Anybody can get them at any time, commissioners. I think we have them online, Walter, and stored that we can send them. What we're proposing is to revise our bed and breakfast, our special use permit, and our planned zoning development process to incorporate really two types of short-term rentals. And what we would discern that was whether it is owner occupied, the owner is living on the property, and whether it is non-owner occupied. So that's to us is the STR1, which is the owner occupied. STR2 is the non-owner occupied. I do want to also point out that there has been a question raised on whether the owner occupied status could be expanded to be more than just the property itself, that maybe there's a distance limit, be it blocks, or feet, or miles, or same city, that would accommodate that and still be counted. We have not made that determination yet. I just wanted to make the commission aware that that was also one of the comments on what would be considered an owner occupied for that. So what, the last deal is what we're proposing, the, we're wanting to, all short-term rentals, including those classifieds, that bed and breakfast shall obtain a business license to operate in the city. We're looking for adequate parking on the same lot as the residents involved, and for all permanent residents and guests, or approved parking plan and more. In a parking plan, we're also looking at existing parking. There was a concern raised about if parking on the street is allowed, it does have to be off-street parking. And so we're looking at, or an approved parking plan, that they're looking to put it in. We're looking for that all proposed rentals obtain annual inspections from the building code office and fire marshal, and that's for life safety conditions. We're looking at placard display address at each rental unit to help renters tell where they are staying at the address, and it all boils down to that emergency. And we don't want anything to happen to anybody. But we also want, since this is transient in nature, somebody rents a short-term rental, this may be the first rental that they have at this address. And they, the renters may not be knowledgeable of all the safety measures, fire extinguisher locations, stuff like that in the residence. And when an emergency happens, sometimes us as human beings needs additional stuff to help guide us on what needs to happen in an emergency that may not be found in a single-family residence. We're looking for codes for the unit containing a fireplace, you know, because, you know, fireplace that need to be maintained, even when you might have signs that say, "Do not use the fireplace." You may not be guaranteed that the fireplace won't be used unless it's just totally blocked off. And so we're, we're just, we're looking for life safety issues on that. Designate a responsible party with contact information to address any complaints from any guests and neighbors. And then we're gonna require conformance with the land use and life safety regulations. And this is also, and we'll get in more depth as more time we get this, hear some from the public. Like I said, this is a draft. We are also in the enforcement process of it. It will be a combination of third-party entities that we will contract with that will help us find short-term rentals that have not been licensed, and also help process complaints through our system, be it online or calling in. We're implementing a new call-in feature now with our building code that people can actually call in for inspections, call in for other aspects. So we'll actually go to that system, be able to have that system available in some aspect of it, but we're gonna have to implement that portion. None of that has been implemented yet, and also the inspections. So in order for us to do what I believe needs to happen on a yearly basis, we will also be presenting, when we get to the final draft form, and not necessarily in the ordinance itself, but to the board to be aware of budgetary needs, to be able to do a yearly inspection. Because if you look at some of the numbers that we have, it ranges, it could be 400 to 600 at any given point in time that are available to rent. Some of them might be duplicates, some of them might also be condos downtown or listed in hotels. But if you are that single-family residence and we have to go inspect it, say it's 350 of them, and we gotta do that in a year, with also the enforcement that may be happening, then that may be a code officer for us with all needs associated with that, the, you know, insurance aspect of it, also vehicles and the equipment that is needed to do so. So that right there is essentially the, our summary of what the, what we're proposing on the codes. The, from this point, we will have, like I said, this will be the initial one. We'll receive comments back from the commissioners. We'll look at addressing and revising the ordinance. We will have another meeting a month from now, not exactly. When's our next meeting date, Monty?
June 9.
June 9. In June 9, we'll hear more public input. They'll be able to see maybe some, definitely some draft revisions for what we're looking at from what we received on comments, what the commission's looking to see. And then after that one, we would entertain a, at the June 9 meeting, motion to try to move it to the board level, but that does not mean that even a vote needs to happen at that date. Like I said, I'm just looking to take it sometime in the July timeframe to go. So there's no hard set date for that. So if another meeting is needed at, by the commissions, you know, if they choose to do that, that can definitely be accommodated. So if any, if commissioners have any questions, I can entertain those.
Well, I think, why don't we start by saying first, no one's online who wants to talk? Is that correct?
No, no one raised their hands.
All right, so no one's online. So we're gonna hear from the people in this room, and we're gonna give everybody five minutes. Romy, you got this clock ready to go? I want everybody who wants to speak to have a chance to speak, but I also want everybody to understand it's getting a little late. Y'all been patient, and I think y'all have earned the right for sure to speak, but also want to make sure that, you know, we kind of keep the conversation time constrained and know that this is a process. time constrained and know that this is a process we want to address. Because as you've noted today, after y'all have sat here patiently and listened, we had one, at least three that we had today that dealt with this exact issue. And it's been the track record. So hopefully by around 8:30, we will all be able to say we had a positive experience and we were heard. And I want to make sure everybody knows that if you want to reach out to me, my email address is on the Little Rock Planning website. You can feel free to email me, and I will respond to everybody who emails me before the next meeting. I have that commitment to y'all. So with that said, why don't we start off in a little bit reverse order? We do have one individual here, Pamela Powell, who said she was in support of this item. So why don't we start with Pamela and hear the first five minutes of her reasoning in support of.
Hello, everybody. And thank you for allowing us five minutes apiece, although I don't think I'll need that much time. My name is Pam Powell, and I'm president of the University Park Neighborhood Association. And thanks to a grant from the National Park Service obtained by the Little Rock Planning Department, we're applying for the National Register of Historic Places designation. We're a quiet neighborhood, and we have low crime. Everybody knows everybody. When we see strangers in the neighborhood, they usually call me or they call the police. The police are really good about coming. We've had a short-term rental in our neighborhood for about a month. And during that short timeframe, we've already had an 18-wheeler parked on one of our streets for over a week. The other day, I looked up and saw a man over six feet tall, about 240 pounds, wearing shorts, jogging down our street. He actually resembled that six-foot-nine guy that escaped the killer. But since I was standing in the middle of the street talking to a neighbor, I couldn't avoid him. So I started asking him questions like, who are you? You live in the neighborhood? No, and he didn't. And he said he and two other men were staying at the short-term rental, which I knew where it was. And this was, you know, intimidating to the widow who lived next door to have these three men living there, and she didn't know anything about them, wasn't expecting them. You know, just kind of, just intimidating in general. We strongly support this legislation, regulation, because, you know, we're a residential area. We're not a commercial district. We thank you for thinking it out and considering all of the things that it could impact. One other thing I'd like to see, and the neighborhood in general would like to see considered, is adding approval by immediate neighbors. Because it is a commercial enterprise in a residential area. And I particularly am glad that you guys separated it out into owner occupied and not owner occupied. Because I do think that makes a difference. Because that person who lives in the neighborhood is going to be communicating with neighbors. They're going to be particular about who lives in the house with them. And those that are not owner occupied could be living anywhere and not concerned about anything in the city of Little Rock. So, you know, to me, that really makes a difference. Those short-term rental twos, I think it really needs to be stricter than the short-term rental ones. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you very much. Taking a few notes, hold on. Okay. Johnson, Mrs. Johnson? Antebell? Antoinette, I am poor at reading, obviously. I read it all earlier. Mrs. Johnson, thank you.
I used to be Antoinette Fidusha. So whenever anybody said anything, I'd be like, it's me. Thank you for letting us speak. My name's Antoinette Johnson, and I live in the Hillcrest Historic District. I've lived there for 17 years. And I am vice president of the Hillcrest Residents Association, even though I'm coming here today to speak on my own behalf, because my husband and I have operated a short-term rental in our backyard in an accessory dwelling since 2018. Many houses in our historic district have accessory dwellings. Most of them do. And most of them have very thin driveways because cars were smaller when the houses in our neighborhood were built. They were primarily built between 1890 and 1940. So they have those accessory dwellings and really thin driveways. Not all of the houses have alleys. And we rely on the parking in front of our houses for our own use. And it kind of is public parking for all the neighbors also. Let's see, I'm sorry. I think that there are many, many positives to short-term rentals, especially in historic districts, when there's a owner that's close by and is able to keep a watchful eye on their property. For one, something that Hillcrest is always worried about is losing our historic designation by losing more historic structures. When we allow people to use these accessory dwellings as short-term rentals, people are more likely to put money into their properties, into these accessory properties, which would be underutilized, mainly used for storage, or might even be neglected so far as to be demolished eventually. Also, when we have short-term rentals in our neighborhood, it supports neighborhood businesses because people who are looking for short-term rentals are wanting to experience that community. In Hillcrest, we have a lot of walkable restaurants and businesses, and our guests are looking for those amenities. So I'm asking that you guys waive the parking requirement for two paved parking paths, pads for short-term rentals that are owner occupied and without an alley to utilize. So they're able to utilize street parking in front of the house. The other thing I'm asking here today is that the approval for a short-term rental stay with the owner instead of the property, which, as I understand now, it stays with the property once it's approved. So that way, if there is a bad apple as a homeowner with a short-term rental, that there's a problem property, it can't, it won't stay that way. It won't be rented or purchased again without having to go through the process of talking to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Orndorf.
Thank you guys so much. Yeah, I appreciate this time to speak. I'm not going to offer suggestions on what the ordinance should look like. I wrote an op-ed with some of my thoughts back in 2020, when we originally thought we were going to be taking up this issue. A lot of that is still relevant today. I am sympathetic to the position that you guys are in. This is clearly a tough issue. It's something that is, we're trying to apply to a very big, complex city, and it affects all of us differently. That said, I'd like to share just a little bit of my story and my experience with SDRs and how they affected my neighborhood. My name is Mike Orndorf. I own and operate The Tiny Home. I believe it's the most reviewed Airbnb in Arkansas. We have hosted this space for over seven years now and have enjoyed sharing our touch and how visitors experience Little Rock. We have had over 1,000 reviews and are currently at 4.97 stars. It would be higher, but seven years ago, we were often reviewed poorly for location. Our neighborhood wasn't considered desirable then, and that brought our score down. While The Tiny Home is not on the same lot as our primary residence, it is only 52 feet away. The lot that, the 270-square-foot home is built on is 62 feet deep by 30 feet wide. Historically, a shotgun home once stood there. Code changes from the 60s made the reconstruction of something like the original home impossible without regulatory delays and costs. We chose to build what code allowed by right and what was a one-bedroom, I'm sorry, and that was a one-bedroom home with a three-quarter bath kitchen with no dishwasher and no washer dryer. It's a beautiful home that we are proud of and happy to share, but it's less suited for long-term residents. We do not offer off-street parking, only street parking now for seven years. Guests with multiple vehicles, vehicles pulling trailers, U-Hauls, U-Haul trucks have all stayed here and never once have any neighbors or guests complained. In our neighborhood, a block from Rockefeller Elementary, we personally welcome and prefer street parking. As parents of two toddlers, the parked cars make us safer. They create a steel barrier between us on the sidewalks and automobiles and transit. Street parking helps calm the traffic and drivers move more slowly. Under the current proposed ordinance, our STR thought, though just 52 feet from our backyard, would be considered type two and would be shut down for not offering off-street parking. A year or so after experiencing success with The Tiny Home, we gained city approval for the construction of an ADU garage apartment. That process required a conditional use permit. Rents at the time in our area would not have been enough to cover the mortgage. So we furnished it and offered it as an STR. Our very first guest was a couple living in Bryant and working in Little Rock. They wanted to know what it was like to live in our neighborhood. At that, at the time, it was wrongly perceived to be unsafe. They were interested in voiding an hour commute each day for each of them. After a week of living in our STR, they decided to build a home in our neighborhood, and they have been our neighbors and friends for over five years now. This space is now rented as a long-term apartment. Thanks to the growing interest and willingness to live in our neighborhood brought adequate rents. Around the same time, we built a home on the 1900 block of Scott Street. We were not able to sell the home, and we had similar issues of rents that were inadequate to pay the mortgage. So we used it as an STR to get by. In less than two years, all the while pecking away at the misperception of our neighborhood, a market of interest began to build, and we were able to sell the home. According to a Clinton School of Public Service survey done a couple of years ago, there are still over 180 empty lots in Pettaway, not counting the dozens of condemned or abandoned homes. STR use has been especially helpful in the revitalization of our neighborhood and continues to be. Our location is friendly to travelers since we are close to the interstate, downtown, and airport. I'm confident our neighborhood is one of the densest STR-populated neighborhoods in Little Rock. There are three of them on my city block and many more in our neighborhood. I know that regulation can help. I'm actually building two one-bedroom, one-bath homes in our neighborhood that I will sell, but I am not willing to sell them for the use as an STR. Starter homes should be available to every neighborhood. I support the goal of reducing widespread commercialization of SDRs by outside ownership. Oversaturation of STR twos will diminish community and have negative impacts on the health, safety, and welfare of residents. I support the proper surrendering of sales tax, the requirement to obtain a business license. And I agree parties taking place in SDRs that are in a neighborhood setting should be prohibited. There are many things almost every host would agree on that we need help from the city to make STR use better. Please consider rewriting the ordinance to more broadly empower the people of Little Rock. With revision, it could cultivate and stimulate the success of our neighborhoods that need it most. A good place is one where an individual can reasonably start with nothing and end up with something. Do I have a few more seconds? I just wanted to share, like, some of the problems that our neighborhood is actually facing right now. For instance, one of my neighbors a couple of weeks ago was shot. Look it up, Bragg Street should pop up on Google. It took years and three shootings before we could get and eat, help nudge the illegal casino out of our neighborhood. The crack house further down Park Lane from our tiny home finally got so bad, it wasn't good enough to sell crack out of. I, on behalf of other neighbors, have asked for help from the city in ending an unregistered business operating on a residential lot. Individuals gather and drink all day and night on a 2,000-block of Cumberland. It's a scrapyard slash pallet transfer that the city department asked, that the city department asked for and addressing told me they were not a business. They just stored those things there temporarily. There are no homes on this lot, and none of these individuals using the lot own it. Like, I'm proud of our neighborhood, how far we've come, and what the future holds. I'm thankful for the help from our city employees and political leaders. But frankly, we just, like, we have bigger problems than tall people that we don't know running down our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Casey Huey.
Thank you, Chairman Vogler and Director Collins, Commissioner's staff.
Great story, Mike.
Congratulations on your success, and Antoinette. I'm a native of Little Rock, it's my hometown. You may remember me from the last meeting. And I'm just back because I see this ordinance, and I see the sausage-making of our government. And I just want to say a few things about it. I feel property owners have rights. I totally agree that our city needs regulations. We need to be able to account for who's in business. We need to be able to collect the appropriate taxes and, and keep it organized. But also believe that, you know, property owners have some basic rights. And, and in the process of my discovery of all of this that's going on here, I have met a few of my colleagues in the room. And I think that we all agree that we want there to be a mechanism to ensure, you know, the health, safety, and welfare of occupants and neighbors. I think we all agree. Everyone's interested, that I know, maintaining an excellent property and being a great ambassador to our city. But you know, another thing we want is some certainty, some certainty about the process. And so, you know, when I started looking at this and trying to figure out, you know, how can we convert, I own two houses on Cantrell, contiguous properties, near Cantrell and 430, you may recall. So lots of traffic on Cantrell, Cantrell's been up today. But I applied for an STR two. And the staff, the first thing I would comment, staff, is that we were basically told, this looks like a shoe-in. So there's that. And so when I first came to the meeting and I realized that the staff had recommended to deny, then I was like, a little bit taken aback by kind of the process. And again, Director Collins, I heard you explain the process today and that you aren't the, you know, the judge and jury on everything. But honestly, you know, I've now attended a second meeting with Mr. Malone. And Chairman Vogler, you came to part of that meeting. And if it was designed to be, you know, something to embrace the STR community and to craft good laws, I mean, 500 and some odd businesses, right? Is that the way y'all would interpret that many properties in our city that are out for rental? Those are businesses? That's a lot of entrepreneurs, maybe some own multiple. But, but the process, I felt like at that meeting was really there, you know, I felt like we were kind of getting stiff-armed, quite frankly, and that it wasn't really embracing the opportunity. This is a huge business, the trains left the station on short-term rental. Everyone should agree that it's a, it's a way that people choose to visit areas and, and that's the lodging they choose for lots of reasons. And, you know, so I don't think that we need to all be, you know, supporting the hotel oligopolies out there over, say, you know, the residents and a wide network of entrepreneurship. So the ordinance isn't ready yet, but we need an ordinance. So we were told it was going to be a layup. We paid a fee, we secured a survey, followed the rules, and received a 5-4-1 vote. And just to think about the vote, and Mr. Hart, I appreciate you speaking up in that meeting. But the vote, the voting process I'm seeing tonight, I noticed on the, you know, in this, I saw Palm Street get an STR today in a dense area. But, you know, which is interesting. But, but I think the process, when you, you know, when you read what you're about to vote on, the motion, I noticed in the case of the staff recommending denial of my application, that the motion was not read in a way where that got excluded. So the fact that there was a yes or a no vote was confusing. And even the board commissioners asked some questions about that and wanted some clarification. And so that seems to be inconsistent in the way you just call a vote. So I just wanted to point that out. I would like to see that changed. I really would like the, the Uh, I really would like the, the staff, uh, and the commission to, you know, embrace all the various property owners. Um, and, you know, we ask questions like, what STR2s have been approved? And it's just like crickets, like you gotta go find that information yourself, yet there's been some research done. So come on, you know, help us out. Why not a staff or a board that seeks to grow this and nurture it instead of, you know, kind of the stiff arm that we felt? Um, so I, I appreciate, I realize a lot of you guys are volunteers here, and kudos to you. I know it's difficult to hear, you know, a citizen speak out and not be favorable about everything that's happening, but, uh, but this is something that I wanna, I'm here because I care about it. This is my hometown. I've been here my entire life. I'm a 58-year-old man, and I love Little Rock, and I want to support our city and see some positive things happen in our city. So I thank you all for your time. I appreciate you guys pushing back on the ordinance as it's currently written. There's been a lot of great suggestions by smarter people than myself that not, not all of them made that list on the board. In fact, when we asked about some of those, they didn't seem to have access to that at the time we were in a meeting, we were asking about those things. So, um, so I appreciate, um, you know, being a citizen of our town. Thank you for the work you're doing here. Uh, I really do want to see these, uh, this ordinance ultimately in place, but in a way that's favorable and supportive of this growth industry and all of the various entrepreneurs. Thank you.
I think Amy Huey is also going to speak as well.
Had to borrow his readers. I've never been to a planning meeting before, and so this is like really unique. I really appreciate all of y'all's time. Um, and Mike, I really appreciate what you had to say and Casey. Um, so a little bit about me, I'm a native of Little Rock. I grew up here, I went to college here, and basically never left Arkansas.
Excuse me, can you pull the mic closer or step up?
Yeah, I can step up. Sorry about that. Um, so I basically never left after college. In my 17-year career, and so let me just, this is kind of like a fluff story. This may not necessarily have anything to do with STR, but I promise I'll wrap it up with a bow. Um, in my 17 years of what I do, I have been 30-plus trips abroad, I've been over 200 trips nationwide. Um, but as the saying goes, there's no place like home, and that basically is what I've done. Every time I come home, I'm glad to be in Little Rock, but of course, there's always something that you go, why don't we do this? Or how could we do this better? Why does this town like Madison, Mississippi only have brick and it just looks beautiful down every street they go to? And we have strip malls that just look thrown up everywhere. You know, so there's always that comparison. We always do that. But Little Rock has always seemed like it's a little bit prejudiced against progress, and it's just, it's weird to me. Um, kind of what Casey was saying, I'm on, we're on an email thread with people that are a lot smarter than me, with lawyers, there's a medical doctor on there, there's a financial advisor, there's a developer, and there are more, but what's the common denominator on that email thread is that we're all short-term rental owners. Um, when I first read the ordinance last fall, it really, it honestly really did surprise me. You know, my, my background before what I currently do is in telecom and marketing. The ordinance really kind of shocked me. It seemed like it was like a copy and paste from a smaller, less developed town. One of the examples is in a bedroom, you can only have two people in the bedroom. That is bizarre to me when hotels, you can have four to six people just in a hotel room. Why is it, why is there two people? Why is there that? Another thing is it violently steers growth away from entrepreneurship and from growth in our company, in our community. Short-term rentals, we may just look at each individual owner as just one house, but honestly, collectively, it's a big community. And just like if you look at the statistics, I wrote a ton of statistics, statistics down that I'm not going to bore you with because we all know, just like Casey said, the train has left the station. But this is something that we can either harness and address and really help our town grow because entrepreneurship feeds other entrepreneurs. You go to Fayetteville, you go to Bentonville, you go to Rogers, their STR community is massive, and it's feeding the growth of their downtown communities, it's feeding people coming into their communities, and that's what could happen here in Little Rock. Instead of us being a stopover for a dance recital or a graduation or a wedding, you could create it to where if you build it, they will come. And I think that's kind of what we're missing here. I'm going to skip all those statistics. You know, people are, are traveling more nationwide. There's more because of COVID, more remote working. Uh, you know, Airbnb in particular just announced, their CEO just announced that everything is going to be, there's no office, no one's coming into the office, your office is your home. So people are willing to go and do an Airbnb, do a VRBO in a different city, and they can still work there. Um, the application process, you can kind of tell that Casey is getting a little bit heated on that, but it's not transparent. It seems like it's not fluid, and it's fluid more to opinion than it is to facts. One of the examples is, you know, we kind of felt like we were spinning our wheels even coming here tonight, but the Palm Street, you guys recommended that it get denied. He comes up, I didn't know we could do PowerPoints. If we, if I knew we could do PowerPoints, I would have had some PowerPoints with some maps and some demographics about Cantrell traffic, all that good stuff, but it's not, it's fluid with opinion, not facts, because the facts didn't change from the application of Palm Street and him getting up here and talking. So that is kind of shocking when you're sitting in our position and you watch the process go down right in front of your eyes. Another thing is you're leaving money on the table by, by doing this ordinance. Other cities are less punitive with their ordinances, and the growth will follow that. This is a flawed position if you only look at it from a hotel lens. It were not a hotel lens, you know? It would also be looking at it as long-term leases and applying the same rules that apartment complexes have. It's different. It should be a little bit more fluid than that. And the ordinance, here's another example. You say no weddings, no events, and I get that because a lot of people are in residential areas, just like you denied the Central High earlier. I totally get that, but it's not, all short-term rentals are not on a residential street or they're not on a compact, dense community. So when you have one thing in your ordinance that tries to speak for all layers, it just doesn't work. And so I'll just end it with this. In 2020, during COVID, I applied for a court-appointed special advocate, a CASA. Um, I didn't get sworn in until 2021. I've been a CASA for over a year now, and one of the things through the application process that they asked me was, how do you think this is going to affect you? Or what do you expect to get out of this? And one of the, my very first comment was, you know, I think I'm going to get heartbroken when you see the kids in foster care, when you hear their stories. Also think I'm going to get frustrated, um, with the parents, all that good stuff. What I didn't anticipate, how frustrating the system was going to be in how they treat the fosters, and how frustrating dealing with the attorneys through DHS, and how frustrating it is to deal with attorneys at Lydum because they're representing the fosters. I didn't get that part of it. And this is the same thing that I'm going to close with. I didn't realize that this part of us trying to be business owners and contribute back to our city and bring business and revenue and entrepreneurship into our city would be just as frustrating. It is really disheartening to be in this position because I know that you guys work hard and that you're in a thankless position and that you serve our community every month doing this for three hours. So I appreciate you, but I would truly, truly beg you to revisit this ordinance and relook at some of these comments that these, like Paul Dodds is a lawyer, there's several of these guys, and they talk about the PZD zoning, how it's not, uh, very clear, and there's a lot of loopholes in it. And so I would just beg you guys to get with some of these short-term rental owners that have been very successful and pick their head, pick their brains. Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for yours. Y'all were obviously very patient to wait through all of this meeting. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak? We certainly, you know, please, I think your name was earlier, this, is it Angela?
I have two things for my part.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot about that. Yeah, you did. B and 14. All right.
And I'll try to be quick because I know everybody's ready to go home. And I think, uh, Mike did a great job of kind of explaining what it's like to run a short-term rental in one of our neighborhoods south of 630. Um, we are in the Central High neighborhood. Um, we have been there for, gosh, five years now, and we've seen a lot of improvement happen, uh, but we still have a long way to go. Um, and one thing I really enjoy is being an Airbnb host. Um, it kind of happened by accident with us. Um, we were actually, we actually bought the property next door, which was in a very, very sad state. Um, I won't get into the gross details, but there were, there was no running water, and I can't even begin to tell you how many roaches were in that house. Um, we did a complete rehabilitation to this house. Um, in the process, we converted it into a duplex and did our restoration under the historic standards. And, uh, we were able to carve out a small unit for my grandma. Um, the plan was when she would come visit from northeast Arkansas, she would need a place to stay because all of the bedrooms in our house are upstairs, and she is 90 years old and does not do stairs. So we decided that's what we would do. We would carve her out, a little space in our new one-story house that we bought, and then when she wasn't there, we could list it on Airbnb. And we also realized that that might provide some income, which could also offset, um, the rental rates that we would charge our long-term rental in the larger unit in the back. She is a nurse at Children's Hospital. And it actually turned out to really work well for us. I love showing off Central High. I love recommending the local restaurants. I love assuring people that it is a safe neighborhood because we live right next door. Um, I love recommending our local restaurants. I love sitting out on the front porch and drinking a glass of wine with them when they invite me over. Um, we have had such good experiences, which actually led us to consider, um, the purchase of four basically tiny houses, um, just down the road in the Dunbar neighborhood. I, these are actually in worse shape than the one that we bought next door. Um, one of them is, was on the list to be condemned and was about to be taken down. Um, the other ones haven't been lived in in 15 years. There are major issues throughout. Um, but the one thing, when we were running our numbers, that we, we could actually make this work was by listing it on Airbnb. They're all, gosh, 500 to 600 square foot, they're tiny, they're too small to be a long-term rental, but they work perfectly for this, um, including the cute little shotgun. Um, and my concern is that we're going to invest this, uh, invest in this neighborhood. We're going to spend, gosh, who knows how many hundreds of thousands fixing these houses up. And we need some certainty in the process. Um, as several people have pointed out, the process as it currently exists is very vague. Um, and also because we don't live at the property, the one Airbnb that we have now is next door, and these are a minute down the road, this would be considered an STR2. And as we've discussed, that process is, is, is difficult and very unpredictable. And that's not good for getting investment in these neighborhoods where we need it. We need something that is predictable and reliable because we want people to invest here. It does seem that the major concern is that we have people running Airbnbs and short-term rentals that don't care about our neighborhoods, people that don't live in the neighborhood. Well, let's address that. Let's make that STR1 category broader. Let's make it easier. Let's make it where if people want to actually invest in their neighborhoods and show off their neighborhoods, that we allow them to do that and, and, and make it a simple process that they can count on. I don't think anybody cares about the, we want regulation. We're not afraid to pay money and, and pay our share. Um, it's, it's really just creating a process that's accessible and not going to price people out or complicated to the point that people are not going to invest in their neighborhoods. The other thing that I would also propose in addition to expanding the STR1 category, maybe to a five-mile radius, is to consider allowing a special exception to allow STR1 status where someone is converting an unsafe vacant property or a vacant property that has been maybe abandoned for five years or more, to allow people to benefit from the additional income they can make for those short-term rentals and converting these eyesore dilapidated properties into something that actually makes our neighborhood better. So I would also like to add, um, that all of our local Airbnb owners want to see something good come of this. Take advantage of us, use us. We're happy to help provide comments, most of us have. We're happy to help find a regulation that, that makes the city of Little Rock better. So thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Last part that you were talking about. Help me understand how we are not crafting an ordinance that makes it incentivized to reinvest. Elaborate a little bit more on that topic, if you will, because that's what seems like is a common theme among all of the people who are concerned here is that, you know, you all want to invest, you all like your neighborhoods or your properties, and you want to show them off, and you want those around you to do better and be better. So help me understand how we can do a better job of incentivizing, you know, the investor so that they do do those things like rehab dilapidated structures or create something from nothing.
I mean, I, I think it all really does boil down to having a, a more certain process. And I think the Hueys actually spoke to that a little bit in their frustrations with, with how fluid the process is. And, you know, when we're talking these STR2s, which all of my properties would be considered under this proposed regulation, um, it, it all boils down to a lot of times a staff recommendation and whether the, one of the neighbors happens to be upset at the time, um, and comes and throws a fit. Um, I don't think that would happen with any of my neighbors. All of my neighbors love what we're doing, they all know what we're doing, and they're glad to see people in the neighborhood. Um, but you're making it a hard process. Um, it, it, the PZD process is complicated, it is expensive. Um, it's not something that the average homeowner can just go fill out this little application and prepare it. I mean, most of these people retain attorneys to do this. Full disclosure, I'm an attorney, and I, I have to say they're complicated. Um, so I think that maybe that PZD process is a little, either the PZD process that's required for S, STR2s, um, needs to be narrowed so that maybe only people who don't live in the city or who have no ties to the neighborhood are, are required to go through that more difficult process, and then maybe broaden the STR1 process to include more owners and maybe simplify that process some. I will tell you that I'm all about keeping our Airbnbs safe and well-inspected, but that is a really self-governing system. If, if any of you guys know anything about Airbnbs, you live and die by your reviews. I mean, if I have a hair on my pillow, I'm going to hear about it, and I will probably get the worst review ever. Um, it is a very self-governing process. Um, and I also really question how smart it is to spend city resources inspecting Airbnbs when we have neighbors living in my neighborhood in complete squalor. Like, you should see what these people live in, and we can't even afford to, to do our rental inspection program. And I have a hard time justifying doing inspections for visitors when we can't take care of our own citizens first.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. I think there's another gentleman behind you who wanted to speak, and then if he is the last person... the last person, I think it would be proper to allow the commissioners to voice their statements and then we'll adjourn. But, yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. I'm Frank Allison. I appreciate you letting me speak without a card. I applaud you for, for working on these regulations. I think they're very appropriate. I'd just like to make a point that, that there are better ways than others to, to manage these. For example, the, the case that came before you today, right next door is a, is a short-term rental that they, they built specifically for it and they provided parking for it. And, and they did everything, in my opinion, correct. They really did a good job. And, and now next door, the one you approved today, is a three-bedroom that technically they could have two guests per room, which could be six cars. And so in, in neighborhoods like Hillcrest where I live, parking is, is, is just a real problem. And so to address your concern about why there's only two in a bedroom, I would say if you had four in a bedroom, that could be 12 cars in our, in our neighborhood. And so I'm just, I'm saying two things. One is I applaud you for, for, for studying this closely, but I would also encourage you to listen to your staff, that, that, that most of the time, staff has it right. Thank you.
Thank you for the brevity. Any commissioners want to speak on this subject matter?
Yes.
Okay.
First of all, thank you all for staying late to voice your opinion on this matter. I just want you all to know that all of this is new to us as commissioners. We do love revenue in our city and we do love the people in our city. And we also have to listen to the other side, which are people who do not care for short-term rentals in a residential neighborhood. So with that being said, we have to outweigh or, we have to think about those people, just like we have to think about you guys who are trying to make the community a better place as well. I'm for short-term rentals, but I'm also for hearing the other side of a resident who's been there and they moved there to enjoy their neighborhood and to enjoy everything about where they live. And so this is new to us as commissioners. We're trying to do our best to make everybody happy. And if you have a family, you know that's hard to do. So with that, thank you again for your, your comments. Thank you for your thoughts and your concerns. We are taking them down. We are listening. And I turn my time back over to you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Any other commissioners who want to speak on this?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, Commissioner Vogel. So, so I'm definitely for short-term rentals. I, I primarily, when I go on vacation, I mean, I primarily stay in Airbnbs. They do have a way of policing it. Certainly, when I stay in those short-term rentals, you actually trying to get good testimonials from the landlord that you're staying with. And if you get too many bad testimonials, no one rents to you. I, I do find that that is where the future is actually going. If we look down the road 10 years from now, where, you know, where would the city of Little Rock be going? And I do understand we have to listen to the homeowners, but we also have to look at the future. Primarily, when we put in the interstate highway for the United States of America, I'm pretty sure those people back then did mourn the interstate highway going through their community, only wanted two lanes. And so progress is going to be the key. I do think short-term rentals is where the future is really going, and it does add extra revenue to the city and it does offer people who do come visit Little Rock a chance to visit the city. And a lot of those people end up living here permanently after they have stayed in there. So I do think short-term rentals have a way of policing themselves also, just because the people who live there, if you throw a party at a short-term rental, you're going to get a bad review. And if you get too many bad reviews, no one rents to you. So that's, that's all I got, Commissioner Vogel, but I, I do think I'm definitely in favor of short-term rentals.
Thank you, sir. Any other commissioners wish to speak?
Yes, Commissioner, I just wanted to take some time out. This is Commissioner Vickers. I want to respect everybody's time. I know it's getting a little bit late. And I, as I was listening to the citizens here of, of the city and on both sides, and just to say the STR1s as well as the 2s, but first let me start off saying the staff, subcommittees, as well as, of course, the commission, have done a wonderful job, I think, putting the presentation together. I am for SRTs, as Commissioner Haney said. You know, when I frequently travel out of town, I, I frequent at Airbnbs and looking at both sides and trying to look at the, the pros and the cons and looking at our, you know, neighborhoods and, and having that, you know, maybe security fear factor. But also, as the young lady, I didn't get her name, that was stating about, you know, they kind of can govern themselves. A lot of times you do live and die by those policies about people renting to you. So you, you know, basically policing yourself by having that governance. But I think really taking a real scope of looking at this, you know, looking at our guidelines at which we propose to the city, I think really could benefit the city as, as well as these neighborhoods in, in a very positive manner, as well as small businesses and local businesses. So I'm in favor for it. I look forward to us as a commission really putting something together that can, you know, spearhead the city, spearhead small business and, you know, for a positive impact. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, I, one quick point and then just an idea, and I'm not an expert on short-term rentals by any means. There is a part of me, though, as a, just an average citizen and a homeowner and a owner of real estate, that feels like if you are living in the home, it is no one's business but your own who stays there with you if you're living in the home. My brothers lived with me before. I've had a cousin that had to stay with me short-term for a while. I didn't charge them rent, but had I charged them rent, it, the relate, the, the, it was my business who stayed in my home as long as I was there. So there's a part of me that says, do we need the government to regulate who's in your home with you when you're in the home? And then the second thing, this is just an idea, I, I wonder, again, maybe trying to get the government out of it, for those short-term rentals that are in homeowners' associations, that have a homeowners' association, could we not just say, deal with it at the, at the HOA level? I mean, HOAs deal with very specific stuff all the time. I can't put a, a metal building in my backyard. Out in Chennault, I'm pretty sure you, you have to have zoysia and it can't be more than, you know, two and a half inches high. And people actually go by and measure crap like that. So I, I wonder if, if we could eliminate a big chunk of the city in regulating short-term rentals if we just turned it back over to the homeowners' associations. But those would be my two points. If you live in the home, we really should be careful about dictating who comes and who goes and how much they pay. And then if you have a homeowners' association, let's turn it over to, to those guys and, and keep the, keep the government out of it to, to the extent we can. Sean's going to correct me. I see him pulling his mic over there.
No, it's been a long night, but, I mean, when you start charging people to come into your home, it becomes a public safety, health, and welfare issue. I mean, if your brother comes in, that's one thing. But if you've got a stranger coming in from California to come to Little Rock, they, and, and they're renting a space, they expect that city to protect them on some level.
I don't know.
That would be my opinion. Jamie, what do you think?
Well, it, it, I'll, I'll say this, in, I mean, people have been, homeowners have been boarding, have been boarding people for centuries, okay? Watch Forest Gump, that's how Sally Field made a living, taking in boarders. And so there probably weren't rules and regulations and we didn't live in a litigious society and all that stuff. So I, I get all that. So you don't want to get the city in trouble, but again, back to the Airbnb principles, I, I think there are rules in place on those particular contracts that enable you to, so, so there are things like that that, and, and if you don't have a safe environment, those reviews tend to weed those folks out of the, out of the market. But I, I get what you're saying. What do you think about the homeowner association thing, though?
Well, you know, obviously POAs do regulate in, in the area. The, the issue being, though, POAs aren't in control of the city zoning. And so this is clearly within the authority of the commission and the city to regulate. And if we, we rely on POAs or HOAs to take care of it, it'll become a nightmare. I mean, they don't, they're not in charge of zoning.
They're not in charge of zoning, but we're, but we're not violating, we're not turning it from residential into commercial. See, we, we don't regulate now when someone leases long-term. If you, if you, if you rent your house out now, we're not regulating that. We're just talking about short-term, right?
We, we do regulate rental property.
Residential rental property?
You're supposed to register your property within three years and pay a $50 annual fee, correct? Or inspections or something of that nature?
Something of that nature, and, and we can also get that with you, but yes, we do regulate rental property. It's with a different department. Department of Housing and Neighborhood Programs does that. And I, I do want to, I, I understand.
It's just an idea.
People's concern. And the, the thing is with the regulation, and, and I'll go on record and say I'm, I'm a very strong property rights person. Sean knows this from the deal. And, and, and I do have some of those same concerns, but it also boils down to life, safety, health, and welfare, that we as a city has to accommodate that in some shape or fashion, that there is, when somebody comes to your city and does something on a, which would be considered, and I understand somebody renting their property out, which would be a commercial entity, then you have to provide some sort of measure for that. And there, and I have no, I, I understand that there's, there's definitely good players out there in this market, most definitely. I do understand the regulation of ones that are not get regulated out by not, people not renting. But that's not regulating them out. That's not enforcing, you know, the safety. Because as they have said, and you've said too, and I've said that I, I am a strong property rights believer, but it is also the adjacent property owner has those same strong property rights. And you have to understand that and take that into consideration when you look at this. So the, I, I believe both sides. And it's back to Mr. Brooks saying, you have to look at both sides and what is to the benefit of the community to do that. And it's, it's hard. And so, yes, when we done the original draft, that's not set in stone.
You've got to start somewhere.
You have to start somewhere. You have to take it from, and we did, researched a lot of municipalities, looked at it, we tried to come up with something that is the start, that, you know, would have the base to come up with. So I do understand everything and that's why I've made the statement at the very first that this is to hear everybody. This is to, that's why we had the public meetings before we had the official public hearing for the deal, so that we can actually share all that with everybody. And I'll make sure all that is available to all the commissioners and also everything, even the recordings, if everybody don't know, is on, everything that we do is on YouTube for the planning commission, so you can go get all that information at any given point in time. We're going to make all those available. You know, it's, we're all electronic now, so it's not, nothing we can't do and provide on our website to get to that access. And that's why I think it's good to not make a decision at this one time to, to wait and hear and kind of chew on it and then converse and then come back with something that may be molded a little differently. Are we going to make everybody happy? Yeah, probably not. You know, but hopefully we'll be equal and not make everybody happy on both sides. And we'll see.
I want to make two very brief comments because I know we're going, we're, we're going late. When I listened to the speakers, even those who are currently utilizing short-term rentals, I heard at least two say that they are not opposed to regulation. And so, you know, I, I respectfully, Todd, don't like the idea of, of removing this for, under the umbrella of HOAs or POAs because one of the main concerns I heard this evening is that people want uniformity, they want specificity, they want to know what the rules are before they come before the commission or before they've been brought to short-term rentals. And I think if we don't have some uniformity, we would be in a situation where one HOA does it this way and another HOA does it this way, and it may not be fair across the board. And then there are lots of communities who either don't have HOAs or don't have active HOAs or POAs. And so what about those? Do they just not have any rules? And so, you know, I think there needs to be some guidance. I think that benefits both sides. The other thing is I understand the comments about utilizing city resources, but as has been mentioned, I think the Director Collins mentioned this, that we do regulate rental properties. Code enforcement also regulates homeowners. If your grass, I unfortunately, years ago, got one of those notices on my door where my grass was too tall, not because my HOA was enforcing it, but because code enforcement left a note on my door. And so we do use city resources to regulate health, safety, and welfare for short-term rentals and for homeowners. So I don't think this kind of foundational ordinance is inconsistent with what we're doing for homeowners generally and rental properties generally.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodge. I think this meeting has been the longest I've attended, so I want to thank everybody here for staying and for being positive. I've not had the pleasure of traveling as much as some of the speakers tonight, but one thing I can say is every time I come home, I'm proud of where I live. And I think the decisions that come from the people who live here usually outperform all of the decisions that I've seen from other communities. That's probably a biased statement, but I feel like we can solve most any problem if we put our collective, you know, efforts together. And this project was one that I wanted to try and get across the finish line, so thank you all for your participation and, you know, we will do our best. You have that commitment from me, and thank you very much for everyone for staying so late. That said, meeting adjourned.